Thank you all for being here this evening. I'd like to go ahead and call the regular city council meeting to order on Tuesday, February 18th, 2014. At this time, we'd like to invite Eric Gedel. He's president first or in the presidency of the LDS stake. It's for to do the invocation. Is he here? I don't see him. There he is, right there. If you'd all rise, after which I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we do come before thee this evening to thank thee for this opportunity that we have to meet together in this civic responsibility to discuss and to share our thoughts, our feelings, our concerns, and to counsel together on the best solutions to the issues at hand. Father, we ask thee to be with us this evening that those decisions and conversations that we will make tonight might be in the best interest of our families, of our businesses, and our communities. We ask thee to guide our leaders and to be with us as citizens to support those rules and laws and policies that would strengthen our community. Father, again, we are grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy as citizens of this great country. We're grateful for the men and the women who have sacrificed all that we might have the freedoms which we will exercise here tonight. We thank thee for those blessings and for keeping us safe and allowing us to be here this evening, and thus we offer in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you, Eric. This time, we'll move to a roll call, please.
Here.
Councilmember Chapados.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Potter.
President.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. At this time, wanted to move into the third segment of the agenda, the proclamation, acknowledgement, and awards. I think we'll hold that until the fourth. At this time, move into the report from the mayor. A couple of things. Wanted to let you all know that obviously you see it's standing room only. There are some really prestigious seats here in front. If any of you want to come up here and sit down, we'd love to see you. But if not, that's okay. It's standing room only, and as you can see, we also have the live feed piped out onto the television in the lobby, so in case there's not enough room in here, you're welcome to stand up there as well. At this time, wanted to let you all know about the zoning code rewrite. If you missed last week's zoning code open house, obviously very informative, I strongly encourage you to attend the final open house. That's tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the MUSD district office. This is going to affect each of us, and it's very important that we get your input. We're also going to have a zoning code rewrite task force meeting on Wednesday, March 5th, from 5:00 to, excuse me, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the council chambers. That's right here, and it's another great opportunity to make your voice heard, so if you get an opportunity, please attend. Also, wanted to let each of you know I had the opportunity to attend the ADOT meeting here in Sierra Vista this past week. It was a great opportunity to start pushing and moving us ever closer on our great separation, something that we're working very diligently for as it is crucial to the advancement of the city. So I'm hoping, I'll keep your fingers crossed for June, that we get a little extra money from ADOT, and that would be a good sign. Also, I wanted to announce that Vice Mayor Farrell was able to attend the League Executive Committee in my stead, as we are wanting to be kept informed of all the happenings at the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. And then, wanted to let you all know as well that we've been invited to a special sit-down with site selectors tomorrow. I will be representing the city tomorrow with GPEC, and the ambassador of site selectors are those who deal directly with large-scale companies, and they are involved in picking and choosing the locations on where they would like to move their companies to. So it's always a good, a good deal to have a seat at the table. So with that, I wanted to quickly move into something that the council wanted to present, and you'll be slightly patient with me. First off, as you know, some of our staff are moving on and moving into different directions, and so we wanted to say thank you. Is Audra here tonight? Audra Trudell, are you here? If not, we just wanted to ask, send this certificate of appreciation to Audra. Wanted to let her know that she's done a great job in her tenure here, and we wanted to thank her for her service and her work. So if you give a big round of applause for Audra, that'd be good. And last but not least, as you may know, that Jennifer Campbell, the Community Services Director, is moving on, so we'd like to give her a nice big plaque as well. Please give her a round of applause. Congratulations. Thank you. Give her a big round of applause. Okay, and that concludes my report. Before we move on to the report from the city managers, wanted to let you know that as we get ready to move into the call to the public, I have a stack of speaker cards, which is exciting. However, with that, there's obviously a time, and I don't think we can stay here till midnight tomorrow night, so we want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak and do so with candor and yet civility in a timeframe. So I will be limiting the call to the public to two minutes per person, and appreciate if you keep to that even when you get to speak to the item. So I'll move to the report from the city manager at this time.
Honorable Mayor and council members, good evening to each of you. I would like to introduce our interim Community Services Director, Ms. Annalise Legner. You would? Ms. Legner has an extensive background in parks, recreation, libraries, and cultural affairs, and most recently, she has been with the town of Orr Valley in here at southern Arizona, so she will do a tremendous job for us. I would also like to introduce at this point, Mr. Public Works Director, Bill Fay, who will be introducing a new employee.
Mayor Price, members of the council, while some people may be disappointed by the United States performance and so she, and we're all excited about the gold medal in ice dancing, rest assured, in Maricopa, the Public Works Department continues to assemble a dream team. This week's big catch is Mr. Daniel Leonard. Daniel is our new, Daniel is our new facilities manager. He comes from Indiana, but has spent the last few years, he's lived in Maricopa since 2007, and comes to us from Paradise Valley Healthcare, where he was their Director of Facilities Management. He's also very active with youth football for a number of years here in Maricopa, and we're looking forward to great things with him on our team.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, no additional items.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, that moves us to the call to the public. I do have speaker cards for call to the public at this time. I will go through those first. If others wish to approach the podium afterwards, you may do so. However, if you wish to speak to one of the items on the agenda tonight, we will give the opportunity for those who have filled out speaker cards to speak to that agenda item before we start. So just wanted to let you know, you don't have to do it double time. Once would be great. Okay. With that, let's move call to the public again. You'll have approximately two minutes to address the council. Just so you know, the policy is during the call to the public, at which point, we do not typically answer during this timeframe. It's not a call and response, and so we'd like to offer the opportunity for Natasha to, Natasha Nachevatsdal? I'm sorry I butchered that so bad, I really am. I apologize. I remember you from the PRL committee meeting. Natasha, if you'd come up here to the podium, right here? Have a microphone for you and everything.
I'm Natasha, and I want to talk about the Salsa Festival and not letting the community I feel disappointed that you would make that decision to not let the community perform, because Salsa Festival, I thought, it was about the community bringing together, but I guess this year, Salsa Festival is about bringing people from other, like, from Phoenix, from like Casa Grande and all that fun stuff. I've been doing it every year, and I just love doing it, and it makes me feel sad that I can't do it this year, because I love doing it. I love performing in front of my friends and family and all these people in Maricopa. And I, I hope that you can change your mind, because I feel like it's not right to, like, kind of like, this the community to bring people from Phoenix. I mean, like, if you want to promote our city, promote us, you know? Also, at the Parks and Recs meeting, someone stated that there was no performances at the Ostrich Festival. In fact, Desert Sun Performing Arts, my dance studio, is performing at Ostrich Festival. We have to fill in an hour slot for us to perform. So, yeah. And also, is my time up?
I wasn't going to call you on it, but all right. Thank you. Thanks, Natasha. Christine. Christine, same thing. Ned Chevatal? You've got to tell me your last name. I'm really sorry.
Nechvatal.
Thank you. Nechvatal.
Hello, council guests. I'm Christine Nechvatal. That's my daughter Natasha. I know she's very nervous. I'm nervous as well. It's a large crowd today. I was, she and I were both at Wednesday's PRL meeting and spoke. I wanted to reiterate to the council that my daughter attended some of the first Parks and Rec classes that the city offered back in fall of 2004, winter 2005. That's how she started dancing, and she's been dancing ever since. She was on the first soccer teams, the first junior sons' teams, some of the flag football teams. She's done it all, and we've supported. She did kids yoga. So we've supported Parks and Rec since we came here in 2004, from its very roots. Natasha performed at Founder's Day at the Duke in 2005. That was her first performance, and she's performed every year since then. So it means a lot to her and to I as well. She's grown up having participated in all these programs and performances, and it's helped her growth quite a bit. I wanted to clarify the point that I made at Wednesday's meeting about asking businesses that, performing arts businesses in particular, that asked for a refund on their booth space from Salsa Festival. My point was, is that the city solicited these businesses with a map that included the main stage and the community stage, and then after booth space was purchased, they took that community stage away. My advertising background, that's a classic bait and switch. It's a no-no. I think you all realize that. Also, wanted to make the point that it was quoted in the paper, that it's only our friends and family that come to watch these performances. And I took that as being, those are undesirable people at the event, and they're not. The SPA alone brings in over 100 friends and family. Some of them, a lot of them, from up in Phoenix, from out of Maricopa. Are their dollars that they're spending when they're here in Maricopa not worth anything? Lastly, like my daughter said, it was mentioned that Ostrich Festival and some other festivals around the valley don't have community performances, and I don't believe that's the case. We are performing an Ostrich Festival. The rodeo in Scottsdale, they have a community parade. Community is involved in these festivals. I say if the city and Parks and Rec want to do a large festival, like was explained in the PRL meeting, they should bring in a professional event coordination, you know, host, to host an event similar to something like the Good Life Festival that in Cantera is putting on coming up soon. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Ken Snap. Ken, are you available? And then on deck is Tim White.
Hey, my name is Ken Snap. I was informed that tonight would be a meeting in regards to the new installation of the Circle K going in at Bowlin Road and Highway 347. However, I see it's not on the, on the agenda. Can you tell me when and where it will be addressed?
I would look to the city manager. Do you have a?
We could try to get Paul to, if you can get with Paul Jefferson, he can probably give you.
So, Mayor.
During the, during the call to the public, it's an opportunity for the citizens to talk directly to council, but council can't respond. And so that information, I think we can get you somebody from the city to give you a date and time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. Sorry for that confusion. Mr. Tim White. And then on deck is Jeffy, excuse me, Jesse Scheffler?
Evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Tim White. I've been a member of this city for longer than this is a city, 25 years. I'm calling tonight about RFP 14 PD 20114. I'm asking the council and the city to table this matter and allow us towing companies to come together and try and work out something that is favorable for both the city and the towing companies. This is unfair, unruly, and just, in my opinion, does not meet all the criterias of what the law says it should be. In case you don't know, for every tow that is brought in under the city's, when they bring them in for impound, the city makes more money on that tow than we do. They're charging $150 for every one of those towths that come in, and that's done with the impounding. I was told I'd get five minutes, and I've only got three, so that's why I'm talking, or two, so that's why I'm talking so fast. Every, every job that's hazardous should be paid more money than something that's not hazardous. According to the National Safety Board, towing companies and towing people are in the top 10 of the most dangerous jobs in America. We feel that by you trying to make us tow for $60, it's a slap in the face and an insult to us and to this, to this community. They're saying, oh, well, you can choose, you can choose to, your, your one-time fee that you can charge, but if, if you have to include everything in that. Well, by doing that, that means if, if somebody's car falls off a cliff and somebody's car needs to be towed, the guy that gets towed gets charged the same amount for the guy that got over the cliff. That's not fair. That's not right. There is nothing wrong with the towing system, and if there is, they have never come to me or my company or any of the other three companies that are here tonight. They have never sat us down and said, this is a problem. We need to address it. We just have been bamboozled with 35 pages, and my opinion is a waste of paper and time. They are now trying to make us tow for them for $60, or we don't have to tow for them at all. That's not fair, and that's not free enterprise. That's dictation, and that's the city trying to be the big brother here. If you really want to give the city and the people of this community a break in towing, then stop the $150 fee that you're charging every time you impound a vehicle, because that's really not fair to the people of this public. All the P, all the PD does is mark papers and dismiss it. We go out and do the weight-laid work. We're the ones out in the hot sun. We're the ones that do the, the dirty deeds. You know, if you're going to start picking on emergency vehicles, we're not the only emergency vehicle. There's ambulances, yet I have never in my life ever heard somebody come back from the hospital and say, oh my, what a lovely ride in the ambulance, they didn't charge us hardly nothing. They are double the amount of money we charge. We don't have, we have paid the same amount of money for equipment. We have the same dangers and the same everything else. But you're not trying to regulate their prices. Why are you trying to regulate ours? It's not fair. If you want something for fair, they won't even sit down at the table under your own document and talk with us. They say there is no talking about it. Either you take this, you ram it down your throat, or you don't tow for the city under emergency vehicles. This ain't fair. This ain't right. I'm asking you to table it and allow us to put it on the agenda and come back to you with something that is fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Jesse in the audience? Jesse, and then Richard.
Well, I think Mr. White pretty much covered it all. That was pretty much the same thing I was going to discuss, so I guess we're good.
Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate it. Richard Vitello? Richard?
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Farrell, and distinguished council members. My name is Richard Vitiello. My family and I have proudly lived in Maricopa since 2005. I'm humbled to stand before you tonight and respectfully announce my candidate for city council. My interest in public service stems from the urgency for friends, neighbors, and professional acquaintances of mine in the community. Further inspiration for my candidacy comes from a recent experience while attending a meeting in Sierra Vista, Sierra Vista of the Arizona State Board of Transportation. I understand, I attended this meeting through an invitation from Kelly Anderson, former mayor of Maricopa and the current vice chairman of the Arizona Transportation Board. The experience in Sierra Vista gave me an education on how the 347 road project that will affect our community. More importantly, I gained an immediate understanding of the importance of local representation at the state level. Mayor Price, you have set an example of local leadership with your tireless efforts regarding the 347 project. You have taken the initiative to be, to be at the state level voice for our community and projects that will have significant location impacts. Thank you. Also, also, it is an honor and a privilege to be standing here tonight to announce my candidacy. I intend to follow the examples set forth by the current council and become a dedicated server and advisor to the community. Thank you all for your service, and thank you for the time that you've given me.
Thank you, Richard. As I said before, that, that's the, that's the conclusion of all the speaker cards I have for the call to the public. I do have a host of others for the items as we get to them. Is there anyone else who would like to attend to the call to the public before we move on? Tori and Joanne? Joanne?
I'm Joanne Ortega, and I'm a community member, and Tori and I were hiding over who's going to come next. No, I'm just kidding. I'm here, many of you know that I'm the president of the Maricopa Rotary Club, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here as a community member and an involved citizen. And there's a, there's a concern that I have that's been expressed in many different ways, and I'm going to go ahead and tell you real quickly how they came about. I sit on the Police Chiefs Advisory Council, and right now, we're working with the, the youth council on a forum, a community forum. And one of the things that they addressed was that these high schoolers do not know they're police officers. They see a uniform, they're intimidated, and consequently, we can get off on the wrong foot, so to speak. The other thing that's of concern is that many of our city employees, especially those at the higher pay grade, do not live in the city, and consequently, a large amount of our payroll, city payroll, is going to Maricopa County or out of our city, and we have a shop local initiative. Okay? We're losing out on housing, as well as groceries and other services. My husband was an officer with the Arizona Department of Public Safety for many years. We raised our kids through DPS. We had to move wherever he was assigned. Wherever we went, Globe, Coolidge, Casa Grande, the officers, men and women, were involved in the community. They were our coaches, our church leaders, our den mothers. They were in the community. The kids knew who their officers were, and it made a big difference in terms of the So what I'm asking for consideration is a residency requirement for new employees, some sort of requirement, whatever the city officials determine would be in the best interest of the city, of course, but some of the outcomes would be obviously shopping local, community involvement in our churches and our community groups, housing, okay? People said, well, before it wasn't a, a good idea because there wasn't housing available, but now housing is turning around. We have rentals and homes for sale, so that's not an issue. And because of that, if a person buys a home or signs a lease, then it's likely that they're not going to go shopping for a new job within a year or two of accepting a job for Maricopa, and we will hopefully curtail some of the training that we're doing for other cities. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Appreciate it. Tori?
Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Farrell, and council. Tori Anders, I'm here on behalf of Against Abuse Incorporated. Have to put a plug in for our Seeds to Change Gala, which is March 1st. All of our proceeds go to our Women and Children's Domestic Violence Shelter here in Maricopa, so it does stay in Maricopa. And with that project, I wanted to share my excitement in the fact that we have hired our first full-time counselor here in Maricopa. She is our Domestic Violence Counselor and our community outreach advocate. She's already met with Mary Witowski, and she's very excited to get started, so I wanted Nympha West to come up so everybody could see her face and know who to contact. So it's, yes, come up here! So Nympha is joining the Maricopa family. She will be moving here, so I'm very excited to have her be a part of Against Abuse and kind of be your contact, go-to person besides me, because I know you get tired of hearing from me. So I just wanted to share that wonderful news and let you know that we still, still do have a few seats available for the gala, so if you haven't bought your ticket, you have two weeks. So thank you so much, and I wanted to speak again, so can I get back in line and put a different hat on?
If you'd like. Yep, absolutely.
So Nympha, welcome. I'm very excited to have you be a part.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Rachel LaFalle, and at the last city council meeting, I spoke to you about the Families First program that's at the local high school, and I just wanted to comment on the support that I've been receiving. I actually went to meet with Chief Stahl this morning, and he wasn't in his office, but I met with Commander Hughes and discussed the Chief's Citizen Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to commend the support that is being received for this community, from the community and from our officers and our business leaders. It is just astounding to know how supportive everyone is of our youth. As I stated before, there's the etiquette training, there's the financial literacy Uh, as I stated before, there's the, um, etiquette training, there's the, um, financial literacy, the college preparatory program. Um, students are just given an environment where they can speak freely about personal issues, about bullying, and then learning how to develop and handle situations where they don't necessarily feel comfortable, but they have the support that they need in order to succeed. And just in speaking with Commander Hughes, um, today, he was telling me about the children that he has in high school and middle school. And he's willing to go out and speak to the students at the high school. And I just thought that was outstanding because for our youth to see the role models and it'll give them the opportunity. I heard Joanne say that they don't know the, the officers, but they, speaking with him this morning, just the willingness for them to go out. And I've been able to speak to officers in the field while they're out there, because I believe in thanking them for their services. But they're always willing to go that extra mile or just take those extra few minutes to show support of the citizens. So, I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel.[662.82][662.82][applause] Tori Anderson, long time no see.
I know. You miss me, huh?
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Mayor Price, Council, thank you for hearing me again. This time, I'm a different person. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Maricopa Unified School District. And I just wanted to, since the crowd is so packed and there's people listening, um, we do have board elections coming up, so we've got three positions open. And I really want to encourage, um, those parents and community members, even if you're not a parent, business owners, to get involved in your school and your local school district and be a part of the change and be a part of the excitement that's happening. Um, this is our future. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that the website to go to, if you have questions, the big question everybody asks is how much time does it take? That's a loaded question, because it really depends on what you put into it. But there is a website that has all kinds of information and questions, and it has some tutorials and some webinars and things that can help you be informed. And that is azsba.org. So, if you go there and go to advocacy and go to, um, board member information, it'll give you all the information you need. So, I just wanted to, uh, invite everyone to be involved and be a part of this community. So, that's it. Now, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, President.[738.82][738.82][applause] Mr. Wade?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and, uh, City Council Members. You know, uh, many times I've come before you and I've said to you, I would never want to sit in your seat because it's, have a difficult situation that you're dealing with at that time. But this time, I would love to be sitting in your seat because you have an opportunity to do something for the community that is outstanding. You have an opportunity to include the community in itself. You have an opportunity to allow these young people to express themselves. You know, part of the requirements for doing certain things in the community is that you have to be engaged. Leadership Academy, different activities that you should participate in and show that you are actually a part of the community. Well, not everybody's gonna go to the Leadership Academy. Some people dance. Not everybody is going to participate in one of the commissions or one of the committees. Some people sing. So, we need to give them an opportunity to express themselves in whatever way they express themselves and remind ourselves, I, I made a comment at the PRL, we need, you need to make sure to remember from whence we came. This community is how we got to Copper Sky. I sat on planning and zoning when Copper Sky was a figment of our imagination. I was proud of that. And I'm gonna be even more proud when I walk in there, got my annual membership, membership, dues, I'm ready to go. Well, that's how these young people feel as well. And I think that you will make the right choice. It's an easy choice. I wish I was sitting there with you to help you make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.[826.19][826.19][applause] Mr. Melvin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Mr. Vice Mayor, Community Members. Uh, everyone's pretty much said it already. Uh, the community has spoken. They want to be a part of their own community. Um, I know there's always two sides to a story. Uh, you have the opportunity to tell your story tonight by allowing community to be a part of the Salsa Festival. That's all, all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Melvin.[852.13][852.13][applause] Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to approach the Call to the Public this time? Seeing, oh, okay. Go right ahead.
I apologize.
No, you're good.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'd like to speak on behalf of our Maricopa Youth Football. Um, we're here today. We, if you'd all like to stand, that's anyone's here with football.[873.82][873.82][applause] We're coming to you to ask you, um, to give us more fill time. We like to have, but kind of be a part of our community, our family, our football family. We'd like to spend our time there. We bring families out three to five times a week on practices. We'd like to have more home games on Saturday, which is not only building in our community, it's bringing other communities into Maricopa. I, myself, and my family, we come from Castigrand every day to bring our son for youth football here in Maricopa because we believe in our coaches, we believe in this community, and we believe in Maricopa's youth. We like keeping them off the streets and giving them something to do. We'd like to feed them into the high school, um, instead of sending them out to Mountain Point or Desert Vista. We'd like to keep them here as Maricopa Rams. So, we'd like your consideration in giving us fill time as much as possible. Um, we do have our coaches who volunteer their own personal time to ref for football, flag football games. And, um, we just like the same consideration as the city youth in, in Maricopa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.[945.43][945.43][applause] Thank you, uh, to each of you that participated this evening. Appreciate it. Uh, at this time, we'd like to move on and close the Call to the Public and move on to the minutes. Uh, this is item 7.1 and 7.2. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. As you see on the agenda, there's no public hearings this evening. Uh, but I do have a question for legal as we move into the consent agenda. I actually do have a speaker card, uh, from Rachel on item 9.3. Do we do speaker cards in this fashion prior to?
You, Mr. Mayor, you can take it off consent and just vote on the rest of consent and then call that first afterwards.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll go down that route. I, I will pull a motion, we'll just, uh, if it's okay with the council, I'll pull off 9.3 from consent and put it at the front of the regular agenda so that we can call the speaker card. Uh, with that, uh, can we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda minus 9.3?
A second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that moves us to the regular agenda. We'll start with item 9.3. And, uh, Rachel, you had a concern that you wished to address on item 9.3 of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, again. I just wanted, I know that you can't respond, but I just was wondering if there could be more clarification before you voted on that agenda item as to the, um, RFP process to add the restrooms for Goodwill and whether or not consideration was given to our local business owners? Because I just, we have a shop local initiative here, and while I do understand that it's below the $25,000 mark, I'm just wondering if there would be any consideration because we are wanting to promote our local business owners so that they can take part in that process as well, even though it was in addition to the prior contract. So, that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, this is under the regular agenda this time, so, uh, the council will take this item for discussion and action. Uh, but I think the, uh, measure at this point is, uh, a move to staff. Bill, did I see you, uh, rise over there? Would you like to address us?
I was just getting ready, Mayor. If you'd like to hear from me.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, the, the matter was solicited for in an RFP. The original, the RFP was for both this building and for the Multi-Gen Center. The original contract was only for this building because Multi-Gen was not finished. So, it was actually publicly solicited. There was no weight put on, uh, no particular weight put on local vendors. No favoritism was given to local vendors during that RFP process, if that answers your question, or if that answers the questions.
Okay, Rachel, does that answer the question then? I mean, as far as, as far as a hiring matrix from the fairness standard, there wasn't additional...
There was not.
Not additional measure granted, is that's what I'm hearing?
There was not. Because that's not part of the city's procurement code.
So, did you hear? Okay. So, say, say whatever you just said into the microphones to the rest of the audience can hear.
So, he said that it's not a part, hi, I asked why there was not that additional weight for local vendors, and he said, because it's not a part of the city's procurement code. So...
So, okay, so Patty, do you want to step up and address that? Patty's our procurement officer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Per the purchasing code, we can put a weight for local vendors if this contract is less than $10,000. This was over a hundred and some thousand dollars. So, local vendors did not get preferential treatment on this.
I see. Okay. Answer the question? Yes. Councilwoman Gussi?
I can ask the same question Ms. LaFalle had asked, and the response that I got was the fact that this was a nonprofit organization and they, that put them that much ahead of whatever competition that they had.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gussi, uh, the fact they were a nonprofit had no bearing on the award of the solicitation back in August or September. Uh, it was based on evaluation criteria. The, uh, solicitation was open to any vendor that had a cleaning service and based on the scoring by the evaluation team, it was awarded to the Goodwill Industries of Central Arizona.
When I asked this specific question was from a community member who actually bid on the project, had called me and said, why wasn't I given preference points for this particular? And at the time, we did have a different city manager, and the response was the fact that this was a nonprofit and that weighed a little bit higher. I, I don't know what the criteria is when you all are evaluating how you get, award these contracts. But, um, in future, if, if I could just make a point, we should give consideration to all our local vendors, at least give them that little bit, much of an edge. Thank you.
Thank you.[1277.58][1277.58][applause]
Honorable Mayor, if I could just, a brief response to...
Please.
Councilwoman, uh, Gussi, if that's the direction that the City Council desires to go, staff will bring back a change to our policy that would allow...
Yes, sir. It would, we would have to address, I believe, the change in the purchasing code then.
Okay. So, we will bring that, that change back to you.
And I think, you know, again, I don't speak for council here, but I, I think that there is a certainly, and we have shop local programs, we talked about that, it's certainly something that we wish to promote. However, I, I just want to make sure we're not going against the law in changing the purchasing code. That is, that is within our, our right and our authority to do so, correct? To give that extra touch to the matrix?
Well, local preferences are always debated, and it depends on how they're set up. I mean, the Goldwater Institute, I think, just sued, um, one of the towns in Southern Arizona, I don't know if it was the city of Tucson, because of their preference program. So, I think a lot of this is gonna probably get defined again, uh, in the court system. Uh, but there, it is allowed, uh, to have some things. They're obviously looked down on, uh, by the courts and, and, and so, we, we'll look at it and see what we can bring back to council.
Okay. So, that, so that would be something I think that council would like to see then, is, is that discussion brought forward in a work session? Yes, Councilwoman Chapados?
Good evening, Mayor. I spoke with Mr. Fay earlier today. I had the same concerns that's been expressed already, and it's my understanding that this contract is good for a year, correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Chapados, this contract is due for either renewal or rebid in July or August.
Of this year?
Of this year, of 2014.
One of my concerns is that this RFP process was kind of unique in that we were also bidding on buildings that hadn't been completed yet. But I would encourage everybody out there that wants to make sure they're in on the bid process to go on our city website and sign up for email preferences, that you will get an email whenever there's an RFP go-out. The other thing that I'm concerned about is this is a huge chunk of change for multiple buildings within the city. Um, I would like to see us review this performance base, uh, in the next few months and see if maybe we, it might make sense to pull out one or two buildings as a separate RFP process instead of giving one company everything. Um, there may be some other options there that we haven't even looked at. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Council? If not, can we have a motion for this item, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. At this time, we'll move to item 10.1. The Mayor and City Councils are to discuss and possibly take action on the recommendation from the Parks, Recreation, and Library Advisory Committee to have the city work under community groups to provide, work with community groups to provide an additional staging area for the community performances at this year's Salsa Festival, and this is for discussion and action. Uh, before we move to any too much discussion, I would like to, uh, go through the speaker cards. Again, we have, uh, several, so if you'd please keep your comments to two minutes and under. Uh, the first, we're gonna, we're gonna run through these. The first will start with Amy Bratley, and, uh, next Patty Cutre, you are on deck. And please, uh, state your name when you get to the podium for us, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I am Amy Bratley, owner of Desert Star Gymnastics, as well as a junior high and high school teacher here in the local community. I'm gonna keep this short and sweet. We've all been through this fiasco that we can learn from. And what I'm hoping that you guys will take the direction of is you've heard us come and speak about how important we feel community is, and I'm sure you've taken that to heart. I'm sure you're tired of my emails and my calls and things like that. But what I want you to do is that, know that, I want you to take this forward into our future and combine the community with everything else. There's a happy medium. We're all here to have growth experiences. Let's do it together and communicate well. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.[1532.08][1532.08][applause] Patty, you're up, and then on deck is Marty McDonald.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Patty Cutre. I have been a resident in, of Maricopa since 2005 and a very active community member. I truly believe that Maricopa's biggest asset is, is our community. I understand that the goal is to make some of our future events interregional events, and we have the skilled staff to do so. But this can't hope and happen overnight and do it simply by opening up a new park. This will take years, many sponsors, and advertising in the valley and in Maricopa. I'm sure that festivals like Glendale Glitters and the Chandler Ostrich Festival took multiple years to gain its popularity and its draw. While I agree that, uh, community performances won't bring in people from the valley, however, that should not mean that we shouldn't showcase our biggest asset, which is our community. We should be opening the lines of communication, pooling our resources, resolving the challenges together as we are all stakeholders in this city. I am asking for the city to keep the community performances as part of our city events. The folks here tonight have put our community a priority. Shouldn't the city do the same? Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.[1618.33][1618.33][applause] Marty, and then Mary Grace, you're on deck.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, uh, it goes without saying that tonight, a lot of us are here, and unfortunately, the seven of you have bared the brunt of the community backlash. And we understand, a lot of us understand, this wasn't your decision to make. However, you're the appeal of the community. In the grand scheme, this is how it ultimately works. And so, before you tonight, that's where you're seeing the community stepping forward, speaking up. You know, Christine and Natasha were literally our first 10 clients that we had sign up back in 2004 for programs. And to see her grow up tonight and, and overcome that fear of public speaking in a very large room, she should be commended. However, as we go forward, we need to understand where we came from. Mr. Wade said it best earlier. In 2004, and, and Councilmember, Vice Mayor Farrell, you're gonna remember this, we stood shoulder to shoulder ladling nacho cheese and serving hot dogs to open up that new trailer. In 2005, some bozo drove a U-Haul into a soft, wet spot out of Province and buried a U-Haul trailer, left a pretty sizable hole. That bozo was me. In 2007, we had a great giant haboo come through and tear up the Salsa Festival and sent chairs flying, chips all over the place, tents, but everybody helped each other. All of these events, even when we had Life House out here, everyone stood shoulder to shoulder. Tonight, you're seeing the community stand shoulder to shoulder. I really appreciate taking the Salsa Festival to another level, making a regional draw, attaching economic development to it, because it's really what these events are about. They're about community, and they're also about being a showcase for the city to attract talent. Minerva Hendricks lived in El Paso. She participated in our second event. She opened her insurance agency here as a result of that event. She moved here. That's a form of economic development, a business started. Today, the Salsa Festival, it's a shadow of itself. We understand that. It needs to get better. But that's a separate issue, not for addressing tonight. However, when you eliminate the community performers, and really what was unfortunate is hearing two prominent members of our Parks and Rec Library Board and their comments last week, it's very disheartening. What makes community events special is the elements that comprise the event themselves. These kids are performing for their community. These kids are performing for their community. It's their first taste of community and civic pride. And when you can do that in a young mind and grow that and foster that going forward, you're really doing something for the greater good of the community. And you're hopefully, Natasha is going to want to be an elected official one day. God bless her if she does. That was a joke. The thing here is, and I think it was Adam Gob today in his editorial talked about Oxnard, California. We went and visited Oxnard in 2007, I think. Oxnard's event draws 50,000 people over three days. It's in a community square, certainly smaller footprint than what Copper Sky offers. The businesses participate, everything from placards on the dining room tables to rings around the napkins promoting the event. Local performers are at that event, from high school bands to dance troops to more. And after all of our research, that's really the direction and the model that we tried to take the salsa festival in. And so Oxnard does have a good footprint to follow. But it really comes down to three simple notions. You, as a city, you ask us to shop local and you use imagery of police, fire and parks to reinforce the concept of buying local so our tax dollars can pay for those essential citizen services. You ask the citizens to vote yes on question five in 2008 to get Copper Sky funded through a bond initiative. Today, a decision was made to say, "Hey, we don't want you to come perform in our new park. We don't want you to come perform at our largest drawing event, but we want you to attend the event. We'll figure out somewhere else to put you in the future for your performance needs." Government isn't about selective enforcement or selective application. Its mission is to provide for the greater good, and here, the greater good of Maricopa is speaking up, or speaking out. And despite that snub, all the groups are willing to come together and perform, should you choose to do so tonight. In closing, the community service really has one mission, Community Services Department, I should say. It's to create community through people, parks and programs, and you guys haven't heard that saying for several years. But the outflow of support tonight reinforces what this department was started on over 10 years ago, and it needs to get back to its roots, and it needs to get back to being about the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, you're up, and then Christina Dugan.
Before I start, I just want to say in December, I so want a Maricopa shirt.
You got it.
Mayor Price, members of our city council, I stand before you as a concerned community member. We are all in this together and want the growth for our city. With the desire to make the salsa festival a regional event, including local performers, should not even be a question. A regional event should be our time to showcase the best of Maricopa. Maricopa is filled with many talented people. Instead of seeking to limit local performers, we should be seeking ways to expand the amount of local performers, even including our adjacent neighbors, and encouraging variety and more talent to shine on our platforms for the rest of the state to see. You cannot shut the doors on your own community. The salsa festival should have community members invested in it, to take ownership of it and to take pride in it. We need to create an event that is rich in traditions, such as things like a parade, celebrity judges, a salsa queen, king and more. Our community should be involved in everything from behind the scenes planning, hosting booths, contest participation, decorating, performances and so much more. Communication and teamwork are the key to making all of this happen. I urge you to remember the value of a strong community. A strong community strengthens our schools, our neighborhoods, our small businesses, all of which new businesses and residents look at when considering making that move to Maricopa. Let's continue on our path of moving forward, tumbling down walls, creating partnerships and building a strong community. Not only this year, but every year, we ask that our community is involved in these events. This is our city, this is our home, this is our community. Let's unite together to grow Maricopa. Don't shut us out. When you do so, you have lost your focus. When you have lost your focus, you have lost your community. Thank you.
Christina Dugan, you're up. Afterwards, Melvin Benning.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Farrell and council members. My name is Tina Dugan. Christina is what I get called when I'm in trouble, but that's what I always put on everything. I'm here to talk about the vision. I think of all the people here, especially Vice Mayor Farrell, can talk about vision because he's one of those visionaries that brought us to where we are today. I've lived here for 17 years, been pretty active in a lot of things, mostly involving the youth of our community, but I get involved in some other things. The bottom line is I see vision, and I truly would like for this event to be a regional event, but community is everything to me. And I don't think there's any in here that know me that would say any different. Community is about children, it's about families, it's about our retirees that live here, it's about our schools, and it's about our city events. I've been to every salsa festival. I was there the year that the haboo hit. And I see visions of great things, too. My children stood out in T-shirts that said, "Vote yes on question five," which for those that don't know, question five is what brought us the Copper Sky Park. This is about all of us together. And in doing that, when you open the thing that this community and these people that sit here fought for, to tell them at the very first big event that they can't perform seems to be a travesty and to be a loss of the vision that we have. It's about all of us, and all of us means having all of us be involved. And that means communication, and it means let us be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Melvin, you're up, and then afterwards, Keri Vargas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Melvin Benning. I represent One Heaven Entertainment Production. I'm part of the community. One of the bands that I promote is called Positive Attitude, and we've been doing the city events from Casa Grande, Main Street to Coolidge Cotton Day Parade. And what we bring is, at least our band is, old school Motown sounds, and then we also have a rental facility with the organization that we do sound equipment, rent all the stage equipment, lighting, fog machines, everything that you can imagine. I did this in the city of Detroit for years before I moved here. I moved here in December of '06. I'm just here to let the city know that we have a lot of professional musicians that's right here in the city, from jazz bands to blues bands, that's playing all around Scottsdale, Phoenix, and they live right here. Even the group that was Showstoppers live right here in Maricopa. They've been at Casino, Arizona, you know. Just to let the city know that we do have an in-house talent that we need to take advantage of, especially like Sedona had a jazz festival. I really can see Maricopa when we do our outside festival, that it would grow so large where people would come from all around and say, "Hey, you going to Maricopa this weekend? They got their jazz festival, their blues festival going on." I'm just here to let the city know that we're here and we'll be here trying to talk to everybody about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. Keri, you're up, and then Molly Farabee.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council for your time. I'm Keri Vargas. I am the owner and artistic director of Maricopa Community Theater, and I have been here since 2006 in getting involved and getting my hands dirty in the community. I'm actually going to tell you a little tiny story that may seem off topic, but I swear I will bring you back around to it. From the time I was five to the time I was 21 years old, my family was actively involved in a little regional event called Walnut Festival in Walnut Creek, California. When I say little, it really wasn't that little. My family was on a association called the Walnut Festival Association that was made up of volunteers of the community who went and came together and took different aspects of the festival and put them on. I have a considerable amount of time and experience putting on festivals in my life. I spend a lot of time doing it. So I understand the challenges that come with putting on something like Salsa Festival or Stagecoach Days or any of those things. I've helped run them. My father helped run them, my brother helped run them. My father was the president of the association, so I get it better than probably a lot of people. One of the things that were hallmark of that event was community, because it was about the community. They put up booths, they sold things, they were interactive, they performed on the stages, and it brought everyone from everywhere. My husband, who lived up in Antioch, which was a good 35, 40 minutes away, they came to that festival. So there is a way to make this event regional and to have it appeal to everybody while still showcasing the community, and that's what's most important. You have invaluable resources in this community that are willing to step up, that are willing to participate, that are willing to help out however and wherever we can do. I provided Mayor Price today a little layout of stages, because I own stages. I have talked with the technical theater director at the high school, and he is willing to help provide that and provide some students to help run and maintain the community stage. You have a lot of options. What I'm not okay with is the fact that we did not get dialogued with, we didn't get talked to. We had a community stage and a main stage on a map, and we were told, "Here you go." And in a little fine print, it said, "Oh, I'm sorry." That's not what community is about. Community is about communicating, dialoguing, engaging. And I'm going to really, really encourage you and the rest of the city staff, who I know work incredibly hard to do what you do for us, and we are grateful for that, but we want to be included. So please dialogue with us, please talk to us, and I am asking you to look at what I provided for you and what the other members of the community are willing to do, and I ask you to change the course and know that we can make it both regional and local at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Keri. Molly Farabee, you're up, after which Cynthia Calhoun.
Cynthia, I checked and know.
Oh, I apologize. You are for, for the item and for making that happen, so just for the record. Appreciate that. Yes, I wish to speak is Cynthia Calhoun, after which, yep, Cynthia, start there.
Okay. Yes, hello, I'm Cynthia Calhoun. Good evening, Mayor Price, council members, community of Maricopa. I come to you in a couple of different capacities. First, I work with Mrs. Keri Vargas a lot with the community theater, and under her guidance, mentorship, I also manage the Teen Conservatory Theater, the daughter company of MCT. I am also a teacher at Maricopa High School, and I run the drama program. With that, I want to clarify that I am not here on behalf of or at the behest of Maricopa High School or Maricopa Unified School District Administration, but rather on behalf of the students I work with. As the drama teacher, I work with performing arts all day long. We are currently in show right now for a big musical, and we were hoping to bring a sampling of that musical to Salsa Festival. Now that's uncertain. I know that people have been talking, and I completely agree, that the performances matter. We want to see our kids on stage, and that's absolutely true. They are such a vital part of our community. As a teacher, I look at this as a great educational experience, along with our school's theater tech director, he's looking at it as the great educational experience for his kids. And as an artist, I want to reaffirm that doing performances is a salve for the soul. It's fun, and it's beautiful and wonderful, but it's in our souls. That's why we do it, and that's why these kids do it. Natasha's the perfect example, and she came up here and spoke. And so as we go forward, I want us to think about, as Mrs. Vargas said, how can we work together and dialogue as a community, especially those, not just our business owners or me as a teacher, but our students, our, our community youth, who are so vital to making these things happen and who are such a great draw for our community. This is a great place to live. I love living here. I have two small children. I don't want to move, I don't want to leave, I love it here. And this is why, because our students have become such a vital part of our community. So as we go forward, from this night and many, many years into the future, I want to reiterate that I would love for this dialogue to keep happening with the schools, with me as the drama teacher. I love doing this, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. And the last one was from Clive Bates, who, check no, did not wish to speak, but the item was 10.1, and the comments were local performers should be given, should always be allowed to, at all local events. That's what it says. Local performers should always be allowed at all local events, so we thank you for that. At this time, we'd thank you all very much for your, for your comments. I'm sure the city council is reviewing them as, as you spoke them. And at this time, we'd like to invite Jennifer up from the Community Services Department to present her side of the story from a presentation standpoint.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First off, just wanted to say that we do appreciate, the Community Services Department appreciates the comments, we really do. They're not always easy to take or to hear. We do appreciate them. The one thing that I can say, being in government for a long time, is you have to be able to know when you've made a decision. It's not a popular one, and the only thing you can do is learn from it. I think a lot of you understand this is a learning process for us, and we appreciate it because you do need to grow, and it's important. And with this information that we hear from you tonight, we can grow as a department. The decision was made not to have performances due to some budgetary reasons, and it was, we were looking at a regional draw by using the money for advertising. Up in the valley, it's not cheap to advertise to get people here to Maricopa for this event. Also, an additional stage, because we're currently going to be using the stage that we currently have with the city that we own for that, it was going to be an additional $4,700. We were not aware of some of the offers out there and some of the equipment that is out there. We've always been in a spirit of cooperation. So that was our side. It was, it was a monetary look, it was a changing of events, and as we all learned, change is not easy, and sometimes change is not necessary. So we do appreciate all the comments from the public, and all I can say is that we can use it as a learning experiences for us to grow. And again, not all these decisions are popular or best. We made one. We're looking to hear council's vision. We've obviously heard the community's vision. We are listening. So I think that we want the community to take away from that. I did get a chance to talk to some community members, and they were still supportive of our department, and I appreciate that. We have a lot of new people here in Maricopa that don't have a lot of background in history. So again, as we're learning more about Maricopa, we also have people that have come from different areas with some new experiences. And the point of these events is for the community, and we want you to have a good time, and it's important. It's not been an easy week, I can tell you that. And again, like I said, you know, good news, bad news. The only thing we can do is hopefully to learn from it, and we do look for our council for vision. That's important. So tonight, it was really government at its best, because this is what government's about. It's about hearing from the people, because it's government for the people, by the people. And I think, we had a very famous man say that a really long time ago. So we are looking for vision. The PRL, we met last Wednesday and looked for some guidance from PRL as an advisory committee. They brought to you the fact of bringing back the community performances with the help of the community, which I think we've seen that there are people that are willing to step up and help. So tonight, we are looking for some vision and some thoughts from council for you to give us direction, which we appreciate.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Council, I wanted to open this up to you, but I want to take this opportunity to, to lead off. It's typically sit back and wait, and you know that, and listen to you all, but I wanted to just convey my thoughts to the council as well as to the audience. I had the opportunity of sitting in the PRL meeting. I try and be as receptive and listen as possible. Received lots of emails, tried to answer every single one of them, lots of phone calls and tried to, tried to call people back. But I, but I did want to say that, you know, again, government isn't perfect, and perfection is perhaps what we strive for, but it's, it's, it's not always there. And so what we do is we learn from it and we move on. But I think that this was a budgetary decision. I appreciate a staff member taking that, that forward thinking of dealing with a budgetary decision, but at the same time, I, I relish in the opportunity for the community to come together. I know my council members have also had the opportunity to speak with many of you, and so we'll, we'll see what each of them have to say on this issue, but I think that we're in the perfect opportunity for collaboration. You know, what we did right and what we did wrong is something to, to learn from, and I think that at this time, I think that we have the ability, as I speak to my council members, that I think we have the ability to compromise, and I think we have the ability to move forward with this. I think there's still plenty of time to, to write this and to make sure that the community performances are involved, but we need to make sure that we do it together with the community. And I know that Ms. Vargas has, has said tonight that she has a stage. We've been talking about this. I know that there are others out there as well that can, can help with a variety of different things, and so I think it's completely plausible. There will be some need from, from the city side in the fact that we might need to go and pick up these stages and make sure they get delivered to the park, but there's certainly location for them, and in my opinion, they're certainly welcome. So I see this as a win-win. I also see this as a, as a learning experience for all of us, and so with that, I'll move it on to each of you council members for your commentary, so. So.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with you, this can be a win-win situation. I want to especially thank Marty McDowell for giving that beautiful historical perspective. One of the problems that had been brought to us was the cost of the stage, the simulating of the stage, the labor. And of course, Ms. Vargas mentioned she has a stage. If that's true, then hopefully we'll eliminate one of those problems. I'm delighted to see the citizen outpouring, supporting participation. I wish we saw, were able to see this more often, but tonight shows that parents are concerned about the youngsters being exposed. I think that young lady that first spoke is an example of the future of the city. And of course, if she represents the city's future, we have a great future. I think we can work, we can find some coming together to satisfy our budgetary requirements as well as accommodating the citizens as much as possible. How that shakes out, we'll determine that, but I'm very supportive of doing whatever we can to support citizen participation. There's a need there, there's obviously a willingness for citizens to get involved. Let's do it.
Thank you. Councilman Potter.
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda item is including, there's a recommendation from the Parks, Parks and Library Advisory Committee to have the city work with community groups, provide the additional staging. Is there a definition of which community groups? Or is that just pretty much open or how would that work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Potter, the PRL just said to work with the community groups, primarily the ones that came to the meeting. There were about 15 individuals that spoke, most of them for community performances. I think the community groups have done a wonderful job of identifying themselves. So I think there would be a long list of people that would be willing to help out and I think that that's what PRL is referring to, is the community members that have spoken out in support.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, about a year and a half ago, when this, when I first came on council, I was and I still am a proponent of the city managing events, in this specific case, the salsa festival. And one of the reasons is I believed, and I still do believe, that the city is in a good position to bring community groups, organizations together at the same place, same time and for the planning, not just for the event itself, but for the planning of the event. So I still think there's still time for the salsa festival. We're riding up on the big opening of Copper Sky, as we all know, and it's going to be really exciting. And for the salsa festival, just a couple of weeks after that, and the public obviously is looking forward to it. So, and I want to encourage that dialogue that's been said, the topic of dialogue, back and forth communication, to remain open, not just in the salsa festival, but beyond, you know, all the events coming up. I think the city can be a strong partner with any and all organizations in this fine community of Maricopa. You know, also, over the last couple of weeks, getting the emails and talking with members of the public, you know, I remembered something. I remembered a few years ago, when I lived in San Diego, San Diego County, I lived in the South Bay, my family, we lived in the South Bay. But my daughter, who at the time was about three years old, was registered or enrolled in the local Parks and Rec programs, being ballet and tap. And we would travel to the San Diego County Fair, which is on the north side, and she would perform on stage. And family, mom, dad, were proud and plus all the other parents were there, proud to see her perform. And also, just a few, a couple of years ago, we had, she had the opportunity to perform on the stage, I believe, by Ms. Vargas, who happened to be her vocal coach at the time, because my daughter happens to sing, here at Bacana Park in one of the events. So the point I'm getting to is I truly believe that we're on the right track as a community in this city with the opening of Copper Sky and salsa festival. And I encourage, again, the dialogue and the communication. I thank the public for wanting to participate and for the PRL for vetting it. Unfortunately, there wasn't a whole lot of time beforehand, but I think everything happens for a reason and we're at this point right now. So I support going forward with the agenda item, as I said.
Would you indulge me for one second? I did leave out a speaker card, it was in the wrong pile. Could I ask if Janelle Linseth wanted to speak or if you just wanted me to read off of this?
I'll just say, we're...
Okay. Thank you very much. I apologize, council, I apologize, audience.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name's Janelle Linseth, I'm the business manager for Firestorm Cheer. We have been heavily involved in many of the community events over the last couple of years and there are just a couple of quick points that I'd like to bring to your attention. One of those being, there's been a lot of discussion about bringing dollars into Maricopa from outside of the community. In Firestorm Cheer, we have, in excess of 85 cheerleaders currently enrolled. And as Councilwoman Potter just spoke to in his own experience, when those cheerleaders get on stage, mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, aunts, uncles, cousins, everybody comes in from out of town. That's dollars that are coming into Maricopa many times from outside of the city. That's one of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention. Also, Ms. Vargas spoke quite a bit about wanting to work together and I want to talk about Firestorm, really, we teach our cheerleaders that it's very important to be part of the community and give back to the community. We've been involved in many community events during previous events such as Founder's Day and the salsa festival. We have worked with the event coordinators to clean up the park after the event is over. And so we'll have our cheerleaders walk in a grid with trash bags, literally picking up, cleaning up the event. And that's just one way to show that you're not just there to perform. Performing is very fun, but there's another side to it as well, which is being part of the community. I've seen this with Firestorm Cheer, I've seen this personally with Maricopa Little League picking up the grounds and also with Maricopa Youth Football. And so it's not limited to the Firestorm organization. I've personally been involved in many organizations that want to be part of the community and we just ask that you continue to allow us to be part. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janelle, appreciate it. My apologies. So Councilwoman Gussi.
Jennifer, I have a question. The event goes from 2:00 to 8:00, six hours. Has that been booked, the main stage been booked all six hours?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gussi, it has planned on it. There was going to be different performances, some contests. We obviously have to announce the winners, different announcements from that stage. In previous, there's usually been about 14 performers, so that stage would not, one stage would not be enough to accommodate as many performers as that would like to perform as well as the other different types of entertainment that we would have.
Years past, there was DJ time, which was music being played by, you know, a CD or whatever. Is that what you have planned within those six hours?
Within the six hours, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gussi, planning on bringing in a band, dance lessons, doing some contests, and then as well again, as announcements, some salsa dancing, flamenco dancing and things like that, that would be on the stage for the six hours. Because there are also too, there is time to switch in between different activities. You have to leave tear down and set up time for the different types of acts that come on as well.
The reason I ask these questions is that I received an email and it was only sent to me from an individual who stated, why are we, why are we considering a second stage instead of, why are they being considered second-class citizens? Why are they being given second stage instead of the main stage when they are the taxpayers, when they are the community members, when they are the ones that should be up front in the main stage? So this is something that I'd like the council to consider. We do have six hours between there. And to give them that stage time, this is what they're asking for in reality. They're asking for them to be showcased, which is what, the people are the gem of the city and they should be showcased. And I agree with the second stage, but at the same time, why should they be second fiddle, right? One of the questions that I also had is, it's more to the attorney. Now, if some, we were to get someone to sponsor a second stage, if that's the direction of the council, would that open us to some type of liability as far as us not paying for
Councilmember, I would think we could handle all that in an agreement with whoever the sponsor would be of the stage.
Okay. And one last question. I counted how many individuals mentioned the fact of the lack of communication. There was eight people who mentioned that. So, you know, shame on us for not communicating better and, you know, we will learn from this going forward. But that's not to say that the staff doesn't bend over backwards to accommodate them. There was an event that went on and there was some issues at the park. 6:30 in the morning, I called one of our staff members and she, if I called my own sister at 6:30 on a Saturday morning, she'd be, she wouldn't even answer my call. But I called this individual, she was there in less than 10 minutes with that gator helping us out. So the community, I mean, the community development bends over backwards and I know they do it not only to please the council or the city manager, they do it to please the community as a whole. So I, and I'm just very upset, you could call it, that we should be rejoicing at the fact that we have this awesome park and we are here at this point, but it's because of our lack of communication and we all agree that that's the reason why. But in moving forward, I would truly, truly love to see some of our community members showcased, if they could come up in such a short notice with a salsa-themed dance or whatever it is, them showcased at the main stage. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Chapados.
Wow, what a turnout. This has been great. Thank you, everybody who took the time to email us, those of you who attended the PRL committee meetings. I didn't personally get any phone calls, I got a lot of emails and I had some conversations with people over the past couple of weeks on this issue. I've heard a lot of great things tonight and I, for one, totally support including community groups in our special events. I think it's an important element that does showcase our city and it also showcases who we are and what we stand for. I just have a couple of logistical questions for Jennifer. I'm also a former event planner. Realistically, two weeks before Salsa Festival, we are opening a major multimillion-dollar establishment. Is a two-week turnaround time enough? What would happen if we pushed the salsa festival back closer to Cinco de Mayo? And if we are going to involve the performance groups, that now gives them a couple more weeks to do rehearsals and tweak things and get some more information out. The other question I have is if the $4,700, depending on what the final number is, what goes away from the event that you've currently got in the plans? I mean, what won't happen or what kind of adjustments do you foresee having to make?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chapados, we have been busy, there's no doubt. We have an opening of two new facilities coming up on March 15th, which we are very excited to showcase and we cannot wait for the public to see that. Two weeks later, we do have salsa. With Audra Trudell, Special Events and Marketing Manager leaving, and myself, I know that we've had discussions with the city manager and I know that the city manager would have direction for that event. We've let him know some of the needs and concerns that we have, so I feel that that would be a call for the city manager to make. Myself and Audra will not be here, so I'm a big believer in not making a decision that I don't have to live with. As far as the staging costs, we would have to look to see where we would go ahead and cut that. It would depend on, maybe we wouldn't do as much regional advertising then, we might end up cutting back on some of the paid performances and we would end up supplementing some of it with community performances. So we would just have to relook at the budget to see where we have to reallocate money.
Okay. To an end, I love some of the comments that were made about the importance of community and involvement and showcasing our kids and using this as an opportunity to grow. I guess as an event planner, I wouldn't necessarily think that stage number two is a second-class stage. It's a community performance stage and, you know, maybe a professional performance stage. So I think in my mind, I'm seeing them on equal playing fields. It's also brand-new in Copper Sky. None of us have ever been to an event there, so it's going to kind of be a premiere as well as a tweaking. It was kind of like the first time we had a council meeting in here, the poor people that were sitting in the old pit. That's why we've rearranged the council chambers, for those of you who haven't been here in a while. The poor staff couldn't hear a word we were saying. So we know that there's tweaks and adjustments that need to be made. I also love the fact that there are so many talented people here. We have a world-renowned composer in Judith Zaman, the Maricopa Music Circle, one of the founders of the Maricopa Arts Council. We've got a number of very fine professional musicians. They performed here at our 10th anniversary in the opening of this building. We invited the Maricopa Chorus to be our premier performance group when we did our tree lighting. So I love the fact that we've got all this local talent and I would love to see jazz festivals, blues festivals, country festivals, rock festivals, oldies festivals, you name it. We've got a lot of new events that I know community services has been talking about planning. I guess for me, I would like to see what we can do, continue the dialogue with Ms. Vargas to find out what, how we can get that stage and make it work and see what other kind of opportunities. I also understood from the PRL meeting that there was a group that not necessarily had contacted you directly, but through word of mouth, we got word that there was maybe either a nonprofit or a group out there that wanted to do some sponsorship. So if there was other things, we need a second sound system, I don't know if Carrie has that as well, we need lighting, we need all, you know, generators, all that other stuff. So if there is somebody out there, this is your call to action. Get ahold of community services tomorrow and let's start that dialogue. The other thing I would encourage is everybody to kind of, to me, communication is a two-way street. When I first moved here, I was very, very critical of our council and our city staff at the time. It was, how come I can't find out any information? How come I have to dig and dig and dig? And I talked to a lot of people at that time and I learned the hard way for me, communication is a two-way street. There is stuff out there. We're constantly improving our website, trying to do emails, trying to improve communication. We've expanded the membership and the involvement of our committees, boards and commission and there's even discussion amongst council and the city manager's office to maybe do some more things. We've got some very innovative staff, Chief Stahl, Coffee with the Chief, that's a direct one-on-one. We've got new groups for our city that the mayor has championed. So there's a lot of ways that people can get involved, find out what's happening. And I know there's some things that we're working on internally that we're not quite ready to unveil yet, but we're working on ways to improve that communication. The other thing, come to our council meetings. I learned so much sitting out there for six years before I got up here. Stuff that you don't learn on TV, stuff that you don't learn by playing back the tape the next day or the week after. Please, as Councilmember Brown said, we love to have you guys come to our council meetings, share your feelings, ask us the hard questions, challenge the way we're doing things and truly working in collaboration as community, because that's what makes Maricopa great. So Jennifer, on behalf of myself and all the people that I've talked to, thanks to community services for all you guys do. I know this has been, trying to do two events two weeks apart, it's an event planner's nightmare, but, you know, all the things that I know you guys are doing behind the scenes to make sure Copper Sky is ready and that's going to be a huge, huge event. Please, everybody, mark your calendars for March 15th, you've got to be there for the grand opening of this. And then, you know, let's make sure that we don't lose sight of not trying to pile too much on this fast-moving train. I don't know how the community performance group feel about if we push that back a little more towards Cinco de Mayo, but at least let's have that dialogue and make sure that we can really handle this and do it well and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gussi, did you have something? Okay. Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Did you have anything?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Couple of questions for Jennifer. I agree with the council member about the staging. I don't think it should be a main stage or a community stage or anything like that. I think it should be shared. You mentioned 14 events, 14 different performances, I'm sorry, in a six-hour period. Those 14 performances, do you have any idea how long each performance is going to last?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, from events in the past, we did not do salsa festival last year, it was produced by a different group. Generally with that, there's usually about a 10-minute performance and there's at least another 10 minutes between tear down. So you're talking at least about 20 to 25 minutes a group and that's where it comes out to about doing about 14 of those. And that's generally what was done in the past, so I'm going off of what we've done in the past in that amount of time.
Well, just a suggestion, maybe putting the two stages side by side from each other. And as you have one performing for 10 minutes and then you're tearing down for 10 minutes, maybe we have a community performance for 10 minutes right on the stage next to it. And that way, your audience doesn't have to retract themselves on somewhere in the park, everything's right there in front of their faces on the two stages. Just a suggestion. Another suggestion is the advertising. When we start advertising and making the final push for this festival, I'd want to recommend to you to please... to recommend to you to please, please, please put in all our advertising that we will have a community stage and we will have our local organizations performing on that stage, so the city does know that. Um, and I, the miscommunication is, uh, this, it was huge miscommunication on everybody's end and, you know, not, not to put the staff down, everybody, you're all right, our staff works very hard, very, very hard, and when, and I commend you guys and I appreciate your hard work. But, you know, sometimes we're human and sometimes we, our intentions are right and we, we try to head in the right way and, and we are, we're, we, we try to be fiscal conservative, especially in this day and age we live in. And I, I appreciate all the, all the phone, I got tons of phone calls, emails, text messages, people stopping me in Walmart, sharing, sharing five, 10 minutes with me. It's, I, I really appreciate the involvement and the passion is what really excites me when I hear you guys and hear your phone calls. And just please accept our apologies and I'm, I'm sitting here looking at this agenda item and I'm telling you, I'm on the 11th year of this, on this council and I can't think of an easier decision I've had to make in all 11 years by looking at this agenda item. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve Agenda Item 10.1.
Okay. There's a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counselmember Kimball, did you have something?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say, um, uh, there's been a lot said tonight, uh, and I, I, I really love seeing everybody come out and sharing your support for the community. And, uh, I'm in 100% support of having community performances and always have been, uh, at the Salsa Festival and will continue to support that for years to come, so. Good to go.
Thank you. Um, with that being said, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, can I ask you to clarify your motion, uh, just for the purpose that obviously it says, uh, for community groups to provide additional staging area for community performances this year's Salsa Festival. Uh, I know we don't want to get too much into the weeds, but I think that the motion suggests something to the effect of, you know, directing the Community Services Department to work together with, uh, our community groups to make this happen, taking into account the suggestions that have been made here tonight.
And I apologize, I'm assuming that's what the motion was going to be. When Counselmember Potter asked Jennifer how she would proceed in that, I think that's exactly how you answered that question. So, that's how I was just moving the motion.
Okay. If, as, as long as council's clear on that, I, I may not have been, so I apologize, but if we're clear on that, then, then I'm fine with it. Uh, that being said, there's a, a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Now, are we talking about having the second stage? Because this is what your suggestion was, having the stage on the same, you know, right, the main stage and then the, the second stage side by side. Is that what your motion is?
No, that was just a suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah. The advertising and the stages were recommendations and suggestions. That wasn't part of my motion. My motion is exactly what 10.1 reads.
Okay. Uh, seeing no other discussion at this time, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, if you thought that one was long, wait till this one. Okay. We're moving into Item 10.2. Mayor and City Councils are discussing possibly take action on approving the proposed fees and charges for the recreation programs, events fees, library fees, field renter fees, and remnant rental fees for the Community Services Department. This is for discussion and action, and I have a whole host of speaker cards here, uh, so we will move to those first. Again, please keep your comments very short, as I have a gazillion of them. So, uh, we're going to go back to Christina Dugan, who also has to speak on this. Christina, you're up, after which Marty McDonald, you're on deck.
Not very often, I'm in a dress and heels, so, you know, got to keep, got to speak twice. Thank you again for hearing me. Um, I just would like to talk about the fees just a little bit. Um, as I said, I've been involved in the community for a long time and that involves Little League. I'm not speaking on behalf of Little League, but I am speaking because I looked at the fee schedule and frankly, I'm scared. Little League is a volunteer organization, it's a national organization, and it's a nonprofit. My husband was president for two years and I currently serve on the district level for District Four in Arizona. Um, looking at the fee schedule that you've put forth, basically it's $32 per player that we have to raise our registration every year in order to be able to just accommodate games, not practices, not anything else. Um, as I said before, I've been around a long time. I've sat in meetings with just about everybody who's been in community services since the beginning. Something you may not know is that when Pecana Park first came into being, there were tractors provided to help reseed and those tractors came from my husband's dairy. We didn't ask anything, that's what community does. We help each other. Little League is about 700 and some odd kids that are served every year. Now, if you put these fees to the programs that are offered by your community services program, say for instance, soccer, which I believe costs about $45, and please understand, this is my son's last year in Little League, I have one now playing college baseball who started in Little League. So, kind of exciting. But, the bottom line is that if you put this to your soccer program, you would have to add and probably charge over $100 per person. So, I'm asking you, if nothing else, to perhaps table the fees in regards to Little League. Um, I do have several suggestions for compromise, one of which, Little League's volunteer, we have Pecana Park. I'm sure they would be happy if you put them at Pecana Park, kept them away from Copper Sky and charged the fees over there. By getting parents involved as volunteers, by getting youth involved as volunteers, as umpire, we, umpires, we create the citizens, the Natasha's, who are going to be sitting up here someday. And with the fees that you're proposing, the possibility exists that it will be very difficult for Little League to continue in the town of Maricopa. And I'd certainly hate to see something that chartered the year before we came, became a city go down because of a fee schedule that's so restrictive that we can no longer offer it to all of these children. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty. And after Marty, Chris Segal.
Be short, I promise.
Thanks, Marty.
Um, just, I would want to echo what Mrs. Dugan said about focusing on the Little League aspect. Um, I'm going to be coaching a kid pitch team for the first time and, you know, as we were told, okay, and that's part of maybe the problem or issue, we will have to go to the city to solicit practice time. If we want to be under the lights, we're going to have to pay. And I get that and I understand all that. But when you put that into numbers and, and you look at a group of eight, nine, and 10-year-olds practicing two times a week for about four hours over a 10-week season, um, it comes out to about $80 in, in field rental or light rental fees that we have to pay. That's $800 over the course of a season for one team, on top of every kid who signed up and paid their hundred-plus-dollar registration fee. When you do that math, you now start having to put a surcharge, Little League would have to put a surcharge on the registration fees to facilitate that cost. It'd actually be a surcharge of about 160%. Little League International is designed to be a top level of the sports funnel, no different than city-run soccer, city-run flag football, city-run basketball. Yet those programs are insulated from some of these costs. Flag football, I coach for you guys and thank you for that privilege. I don't have to pay for practice because it's a city program. In the past, making that investment in groups like Little League that serve the greater good, that are nonprofit, that's the wise decision that you have to look at. Club ball teams, totally different story. I have the opportunity to meet with your staff, because I coach a club soccer team as well. And I get it. I got to pay for fields, I got to pay for lights, I have a rate that I have to cover. But when you get into club sports, you have that pay-to-play model and you can budget for that. But Little League's different. The NFL is a nonprofit. It's tax-exempt. People don't know that and congressmen are trying to change that. So, I think the city can take things at a case-by-case basis, in the case of Little League, and not charge those outlandish fees and work together, because we did it in the past and I know we can do it again in the future. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Marty. Chris Segal and then Tommy Ranka.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, I come before you this evening as a father of a son who loves to play football, almost as much as I love to watch him play football. And I'm a bit distressed. I'm a native Arizonan. I grew up in Tempe when it was a small town and I remember my father and my mother fighting the good fight. I remember moving to Gilbert some years ago and watching it struggle as a community and grow and develop these programs that have now become magnet communities in our area. We now stand here as Maricopa and what do we have to offer? A proud history and a prosperous future. Well, perhaps, but our prosperous future depends on what we do with and for our children on a day-in and day-out basis. We have obesity in our communities, just rampant. We have boys and girls on our teams want to get out there and play ball and it is going to become cost prohibitive if this council decides to impose these fees. The leagues that we represent, which are several different football leagues and tackle football, have borne the brunt of this cost over the last five seasons, to include the fact that we have taken the worst playing times and gotten the leftovers of Pecana Park to be promised when the new fields were built, and I believe you and I had this conversation last season, when the new fields were built, we wouldn't have this issue. Now, we're looking down at increasing fees to the boys that, by the way, and the girls, we all live in the community too. We do buy local. Our kids are local. And to add these fees on top of what we're already doing is just absolutely uncalled-for and unnecessary. The budget does not have any additional fees in it coming from these, uh, field leases or fees that I can see. Your budget doesn't have it in it. I understand there's some costs associated with it and we're more than happy to pay those reasonable fees, but not to the extent that they're proposing at this time.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Tommy? And then Drew Warner? Warner? Thank you. You're on deck.
Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council, my name is Tommy Ranka. Uh, I've been here about five years, moved here. I'm with Our Lady of Grace, uh, uh, Knights of Columbus, uh, also with the Maricopa Little League, uh, as an umpire, been an umpire. I've been associated with the Little League for well over 35 to 40 years. Uh, what I'm going to ask today is very simple. I think we should, I think, I would like for you nice people to, to table, to table the Little League's rental program, just to sit so we could have discussion with the brand-new, uh, city manager that we have here, which we'd like to speak with. Two years ago, we sat with Brenda, two years ago. Brenda said, "Would Little League back, back us up to have a new bowling park?" We said, "Sure. What do you need?" We said, "We need one Little League field, two softball fields, and possibly a 90-foot base field." Okay. What happened was we left and everything was fine. It was great. We're finally going to get our fields, it's going to be great. It ends up, we end up with one 90-foot base field and five softball fields. We don't get the Little League field and it's nobody's fault here, because John Nixon's gone, Brent Billysley's gone, and so is Brenda. So, I can't blame anybody. It, it's one of those things that happens. So, what's, that's, that's the problem. What's the solution? My solution is, why don't you give us Pecana Park? Let us have Little League at Pecana Park. Let us, we can make one of those park one, field one into a real nice Little League field. We'll work it out one way or another. How we, we have, we'll, we'll find the money to put in the grass, to put in the sprinklers, to make it like a Little League field, to do it right. And this is why I'm here today also. But my, I'm going to end with this. I'm asking you people to table this right now, don't decide on it. Give us a, give us a little time so we can meet Mr. Gregory Rose here and get to talk with him. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tommy. Drew, you're up, and then Barb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. Um, I come to you on behalf of Maricopa Youth Football. I've been a resident of the city for seven years now. I've had the privilege and honor of, of coaching for six of those years here in Maricopa. Um, I'm asking for the same thing that Little League is, is that you table the, uh, action on this resolution until we've had a chance to maybe discuss this and have a more of an open dialogue with, uh, with the, the city manager to explain the impact that it would cause to our youth football program. Similar to Little League, uh, the surcharge that would, would impact us from a football perspective would be astronomical. Um, most of our practices happen in the evening where we would need lights and then we practice or have games on Saturdays. Um, so, I would just ask that you table this, because as a father and a coach, I've, I've had the opportunity to see my son grow up through this youth football league and he's now a proud freshman at Maricopa High School. Uh, didn't know a thing about football until he was coached by some of these young men out here and myself as well. And I'm starting to see the fruits of that labor as well, coaching the other, um, some of my other young men as well. So, please, before you take action on this, allow us some more time to meet with the city manager and discuss this and discuss the impact, um, so that the 150 to 200 boys that we represent aren't adversely impacted from a monetary standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Barb, says stencil? Is she, is she gone? Okay. Veronica? Veronica here? Veronica Vizial?
Hi.
Oh, perfect Veronica, thank you. Joel Griffins. Joel, and then David Taylor afterwards. Thanks, Veronica.
Got my sidekick with me today.
Perfect.
All right. Good evening, uh, mayor, council, city staff. Uh, my name is Joe Griffin. I'm a community volunteer. I've been a part of this community for over 10 years and I've been a part of numerous city boards and helped with city programs and activities. I'm here to voice my concern and, over the cost of the, the non-city programs, which, uh, I help out with, uh, our tackle football league. And, um, some of the nonprofits don't have the luxury of having parks at their convenience, so we got to request fields, as usual, it happens, right? We got to request fields and, uh, but we go through a lot of hoops just to get the fields, you know? Odd times, you know, different times of the day and stuff like that. So, we look at those, those new fees that we're going to have to, have to pay sooner or later, you know? It, it's, it's just going to be unreasonable. I mean, that, that, that's a, that's a heavy price to pay if you're already charging the lowest amount for tackle football for some of these leagues. We're the cheapest in the valley as far as tackle football. I mean, our insurance alone and rough fees and stuff like that, I mean, some of them fees, it just wouldn't help us out. Um, it's a saying that we say, uh, down here in Maricopa Youth Football, "It takes a village to raise a child." And that's what we do. We have a large amount of single parents that bring their kids into the program and stuff like that. And we take it upon ourselves, even if they can't afford it. Our coaches take care of the fees or, you know, we do fundraises and stuff like that to help out, you know? And so, that's just something we feel like we should do as a community. Our community isn't just, but, isn't just city programs, it's really the, the, the people in the community that come together and kind of bond as families. I've met so many people from Castle Grand that come out here, from Tempe, that still come out here and bring the kids out here, because they believe in our, our community. You know, I don't even live out here anymore, haven't lived out here for three years, but still decided to come out here and make this a part of my community. And, uh, we're just asking council to look at all the community groups and volunteers and look at these fees and just, just sit back and, and take a look at it and, and really look at it and see if it's really, really worth losing some kids to this. You think I'm a sidekick going to say something?
Sure. All right. Hey, my name is Bakari Jackson. I'm one of the players of the football, tackle football. I'm also blessed to be one of the coach's sons. And I just love this community and I don't want to, like, the fees to get in the way of tackle football. That's all. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. David Taylor, and then Nina Nieves.
After, after spending a year and a half in Iraq, I chose to get out of cold weather. I moved to Maricopa about two years ago and immediately got involved with Maricopa Youth What drew me to Maricopa? I wanted a small town. I grew up in a small town called Home Washington up, up in the state of Washington, and population was, was even smaller than this. I wanted my kids to grow up in that small community where they could grow up together with other football players and create that community buzz. Our entire town should shut down when the high school was playing. The only way that's going to happen is to keep the kids here, to keep them from going to Desert Vista, to keep them from going elsewhere to play football. I just, I know that as a league, we, I, I know that talking with the head coach, we sponsored seventeen kids that couldn't pay anything. That's, that's over five thousand dollars when you add in the kids that couldn't pay anything and the kids that could only pay half, that we're doing through fundraising, that we're, we're coming up with a way to make it so these kids can, can play. And so to add these added fees on top of that, it's just, it's, it's, it's something that will take the, it takes the community out of football.
Thank you very much, David. Nina Nieves?
Against the fees.
Against the fees. Thank you very much. For the record, against the fees. Uh, let's see, Mike Elginsworth? Mike, are you here? As well? Also against the fees. Thank you. And then Steve Meyer, you're next, Steve.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. I just want to say, my son has been a part of Maricopa Youth Football since he was eight years old. It's been a lot of money out of pocket. These fees are going to make it impossible for him to play. As a citizen of Maricopa, and we've been here since 2006, we pay our taxes, just like everybody else pays their taxes. My sons have played for city sports. He doesn't like city sports. He wants to play tackle football. Maricopa City does not offer tackle football for sixty dollars a season. Our teams here are very good. These coaches keep a lot of these kids out of a lot of trouble. Our team, last season, fifteen and oh. Brought home a championship under the city of Maricopa's name, the Maricopa Rams. We play as the Maricopa Heat. We've brought championships home as Maricopa Heat also. We always run the city's name. When we go to other cities, there are times that we are not looked upon as a great city. People have said, "Go back to your little town." Our kids enjoy playing for the city of Maricopa. I would love for my child to continue to play for the city of Maricopa, even though it's not a city team or however you would word it. And I would love, we were considering sending our son to Mountain Point, Desert Vista, Hamilton, not sending him here to Maricopa High. I'm going to be very honest, it's a great group of boys that's here, and if these boys continue to play together and go to the high school here, you will be handed a championship team. They're very good. And they're all upstanding kids, and I just have to toot my own son's horn. He has straight A's in all honors classes, and he takes eighth grade classes as a seventh grader. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Steve Meyer.
Yes, sir. Understand. Thank you very much. Christina Dryden.
You can just read my comment.
For Maricopa Heat football, lights and field usage for our boys, and so obviously against the fees, I would assume. Is that correct? Thank you. Uh, let's see here. Honestly, I do not have a name on this one that I can read. I apologize. It's just a squiggle. So I'll just say, let's work together to help these young, young men feel that they are home and have a place to play, so against the fees. So I apologize if you, if I read your comment, you'd like to speak? Okay. Lacretia? Margerum? Lacretia? Did I butcher your last name? I apologize.
Margerum.
Margerum, okay.
Hi. I didn't want to speak either, but I guess I will, just on behalf of our boys. I'm the team manager of Maricopa Heat, also like the little brother team of Maricopa Youth Football. Shannon said a whole lot. She's been there from the beginning. Our boys are here. They practice in the dark because they don't have lights. We've rented lights. We've had lights donated. We bought with, we, like another parent said, we, our coaches volunteer for the flag football. They don't coach flag football. They don't coach it. They just volunteer their time so they can have lights for the boys. It was something they worked out with somebody that works for the city. So that's just what they do. They come out, they'll do anything for them, and that's why we're here tonight. It's for them, and we'll continue to do that. And so hopefully, you guys can make a way that we can have practice fields and game fields and lights or whatever we need. And like Shannon said, we're pushing these boys, and I apologize because I'm sick, but we're pushing these boys to stay here in Maricopa. We want them to stay here. We want them to bring city championships for Maricopa, for the high school, and they're getting there. We're on our two-year plan. We have boys that are going up this year, eighth graders, that are going into Maricopa High, and we're not going to stop supporting them. Half of them will be there, and the other half are coming right up the rear. And, and like Veronica said, she travels from Casa Grande. She's done it for years. We have other team, other parents that are traveling from Apache Junction just to play under Maricopa. They represent it loud and proud, and they don't even live here. They're considering moving here just to stay and just to keep the players here and together. That's what we want to do, and I hope we don't have to plan to go to other schools. I just don't want that. My kids, they go to school here now, and I don't want to take my son out. Bakari is the one that was speaking. I don't want to take him out to send him to another city. I don't want that to be our other option. I want us to have one option. I want him to go to Maricopa High, and I want all the other hundred and sixty, two-hundred players to go there too, and they're following our league. They're following their parents. They're following the path of the city. So if they, if that door is closed, then we'll just go to somewhere else that will accept us. So let's keep our players here. Let's keep our boys here.
Thank you, Lacretia. Crystal Stevenson? And then Mark Rasmussen?
Hello.
Okay, just, uh, gotcha. Against the, against the fees, so just for the record. Uh, Mark Rasmussen, and then Robert Brazelton?
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Mark Rasmussen. I've lived in Maricopa since 2006. Been involved with Maricopa Little League for the previous five years and president the previous two. I've been asked to speak by MLL about the finances and how that will affect us going forward with the new field fees. Just a little information about Maricopa Little League. We are a 501(c)(3), as everyone has said. We're going on our eleventh year in this town, which I think as far as youth sports is probably one of the more stable programs that we have. So it's not that we're going anywhere and looking to keep expanding. When you look in the sign on the back of the wall there, it does say Maricopa. We're not Maricopa County Little League. We're not Southwest Little League. We're Maricopa Little League. You guys own this league as much as we do or anyone else in this audience. They're your responsibility just as much as they are ours. So I would like to make sure that everybody gets that. For the first time in five years, our league actually raised, raised our registration fees. We hadn't done that in five years, but this year, knowing that the field fees were going to be in place, we did have to do that. And we're looking at for our 2014 season, we'll probably be a little over ten thousand dollars in field fees for our league. We're also looking at potentially losing the snack bar, which is a huge revenue producer for us. Typically, our sales are roughly around eighteen thousand dollars for the whole calendar year, which equates to about a twelve thousand dollar profit for our league to help offset costs and buy new equipment. So we're looking at close to a twenty-three thousand dollar impact for our league, which this year we've actually grown nearly forty percent. So at that point, we're still looking at an additional twenty-nine dollars per player additional cost with those two things having happened to us. So that really puts a tough situation for us. To add to that, we have had over two hundred requests for scholarships this year. It's a number we've never come near having before. That is a dollar amount. I don't have it broken down by every single division, but anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars with a scholarships issue. So it's a very serious number to our league, and along with the field fees really potentially impacts our viability in the future, whereas we've been able to actually do very well that way and be able to do things that many leagues in our district aren't able to for their players and do clinics. Right now, we don't have any practice time scheduled at any fields during the whole season, so every team, and we will have, how many is it? About three hundred and eighty kids coming up that are going to go online practicing next week, and not one of them will practice on a field. They'll all practice on green belts, grass, dirt, wherever they can find a spot. Not one minute of practice time on a field, and I don't know how you teach baseball and running lanes and everything else to players when you're running in grass and with no lights on top of that. We're also hosting the Challenger Jamboree on March twenty-second this year. We are the first group in the state of Arizona to ever host a Challenger Jamboree like this. We're inviting teams from all over the state to come to Maricopa. It will be hosted at Copper Sky, if I am right, Heather, correct? It will be at Copper Sky. This is an opportunity to show our community and our new facilities to people from all over the state. We're hoping to get ten, maybe twenty teams here. Challenger Division, if anybody doesn't know, is for physically and mentally handicapped adults, or children, I'm sorry, to play ball and get an opportunity. Two last things in closing. One, I would like to see if the council would consider some sort of public-private partnership with Maricopa Little League where we could look to take over the maintenance of the fields at Pecanah Park and the snack bar and take care of those issues at our expense and our labor and allow us to use those fields free of charge. I think that's something in talking to our league, we'd be very interested in seeing if that was an option for us going forward. And then in closing, I would like to see that the fees are as minimal as possible. As Marty said earlier, with the soccer programs and everybody else, these are all people in your community that pay the taxes and want to play, and I don't under, I understand that they, with your programs to the city, it's for the city, but these are the same people in your city that want to play, and I don't know why doing a sport other than what the city sponsors should be so much more expensive and be subject to fees that those programs don't have to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Robert Brazelton? Wants access to the fields and lights. Assume he's against the fees, even though it says "for" here. Jessica Solis from the Maricopa Heat. Jessica?
Yes.
Okay. Also, doesn't want to speak, but concerned in youth football, tackle, so much of the same things that we've already heard, which is excellent. Mark, Mark G. Gentilia? Gentilia? Not seeing Mark Gentilia here. And Molly Farabee.
I just wanted to quickly speak on behalf of Maricopa Youth Football League. We have lived here since 2002. Our house was the third house completed in Rancho El Dorado when the community started. Since then, we have five children that we have been raising here in Maricopa. They have been all involved in the beginnings, all the city sports, and our oldest son, who is now twelve, he's been playing for the Maricopa Youth Football League since he was eight. He, we took some time off, and he hasn't gone a day since then asking to play again for the Heat. And he's back on this year. However, with our kids, having so many kids involved in the city and in sports, if the fees were raised, it would make it impossible for the majority of our children to be involved in any of the, any of the activities. We also have a daughter who plays for city football right now, who loves it. She plays the flag football. However, she wants to also move into doing tackle football, and this would highly impact her ability to play as well. So with that, I'm asking the council, mayor, to please consider what everybody else tonight has been asking for, entabling this and discussing it and considering these kids that are representing our community, although it may not be a city league, this is for our city, and they are, they wear our name and represent it well. One last thing that I wanted to add, that the coaches, they're so supportive of these boys. Our son struggled in school, and the head coach, Donnie, told him, "If you don't have your grades up, you're not playing. You're not going to be..." And as soon as he said that, it was literally a week's turnaround, and he's got A's and B's, and he was in D's and F's, and it's, it's what's important to him, and it's following through, which is going to carry over to the high school. We look forward to him being a Ram and our other children as well, moving up into our schools and supporting our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. That concludes our speaker cards at this time. So Jennifer, would you like to step forward and further explain how we got here? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have before you fees to be adopted, not only for field rentals, but Ramadas, for classes, as well as special event fees and updating the library fees. I have staff with me tonight. I have recreation manager Travis Carlin, also parks manager Randy Little to answer questions as well. So basically, we're bringing you tonight. One of the reasons we're bringing the fee update is with the addition of the Copper Sky Regional Park and the Copper Sky Multi-Generation Center, we will be introducing a lot of new classes. Therefore, with the fees for the classes, we wanted to be a little bit more generic on some of those. We know that the community has a lot of interests. We want to be able to meet those interests at any time and, at any moment, so that's why we have the fees for classes. Currently, the fees that we are charging for our classes and sports currently fall in this range. The reason that we went ahead and did a fee range was that sometimes costs do go up. Your cost for officiating could go up, your cost for uniforms, your cost for supplies, your cost for staffing could go up. This way, by having a fee range, we wouldn't have to go to council every time we needed an adjustment, so we wanted to do that range. We, of course, would only raise fees if we did need an adjustment. If for some reason something went up in cost to us to run the program, that's when we would look to do a fee adjustment and to raise that as well. So we did that. The special event and vendor fees depend on the event. Some of the events will be smaller, therefore we wouldn't need to charge as much because we might only have a couple hundred people. Obviously, with some of the bigger events such as Salsa Festival where you have ten to fifteen thousand people, we would charge more for food vendors and business vendors because of the turnout and the more exposure. The library fees, we just needed to update a couple of those to make sure that we're capturing our overdue items, any type of replacement damage. That's most of the fees that usually happen at the library as well. Then we had the park rental fees. We do have some new Ramadas coming onboard. One of the big ones is the group Ramada over at Copper Sky. That will be able to accommodate almost two hundred people. We're looking at that for hopefully businesses to do picnics, for family reunions. It's got grills, tables, sinks, so it's a very nice area, and therefore we needed to establish prices for that because we currently do not have facilities in Maricopa such as those. And yes, we did need to go ahead and visit fee and court rental fees. Fee and court rental fees have not been changed since 2006. It is now 2014. Obviously, prices for such things as water and electricity have gone up. The maintenance of the field generally, we would still maintain fields. You're still going to have to water them. You're still going to have to mow them. You're still going to have to do maintenance. However, if we didn't have use on the fields, we wouldn't be turning on the lights, and that's where the majority of the cost for field rentals comes from, is the lights. What we did was, as usual, we went ahead and we did research on what other communities charged, benchmark, and some of the best practices. So within our study, we ended up benchmarking cities such as Chandler, hang on, let me find that. We did. Casa Grande, Chandler, Gilbert, Goodyear, Queen Creek, and Tempe. The fee ranges on the field rental fees anywhere from seven to twenty-one dollars an hour. That would just be for a field rental that's without a light. The light fees ranged anywhere from ten to forty-five dollars. What it basically comes down to is it's the cost of doing business, because again, if those fields weren't being used by the different groups, the lights wouldn't be on. Again, there's still some level of maintenance, and basically with most programs... Again, there's still some level of maintenance and basically with most programs, there's a cost recovery. There is money obviously budgeted in the general fund for expenditures, but there's also a revenue expectation. With this new regional park and multi-gen center, there are revenue expectations that were brought to council that we would like to meet those. The only way to meet those revenue projections is to charge for fees. That's a basic best practice within any park and recreation department, such as nonprofits, as also YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, as well as private recreation and other nonprofit recreation, sports agencies, dance agencies. You charge fees in order to recoup some of the costs and that's where we're at on this. So we've got a couple of different things that we're looking for approval tonight. Number one is some of the fees for the different programs that we run such as the adaptive program, adult classes, aquatics. We've never had a pool that the city has owned and operated, so we're looking for aquatic fee approval as well. As far as camps, we're looking to have the special event fees approved so that we can set an amount for food vendors and business vendors, as well as different contestants and performing groups. We want to make sure that the library fees are up to date. And those library fees do fall within a lot of what the other Penal County libraries. Since we are part of the Penal County Library District, our fees fall in line with a lot of our fellow libraries that are within that district as well. And then again, with the Ramada fees, those are usually rented by groups for parties, birthday parties, large and different events, which we're hoping to bring in more of those to the community. And then again, you've got fee, field and court rentals. We will have basketball courts, volleyball courts, tennis courts, as well as the multipurpose field and the baseball field. So we are looking for approval. We did run these fees by the Budget Finance and Operations Committee back in December before they were posted. One of the things that we did do was reach out to the sports organizations to let them know that the fees were posted as per Arizona revised statutes to have those posted for sixty days. We let them know that this meeting was coming up and that they did have any concerns or comments to please come to this meeting. So we are happy to see that they are here. We are always in constant communication with these groups about field availability and prices. We also know with the new park coming onboard, we will have a lot more fields to offer. And the fact of only having Pecanah Park, honestly, for a city of forty-five thousand people is very small. There were three multipurpose fields, one of which was not lit, and two ball fields for forty-five thousand people. The mayor has said this numerous times, that Pecanah Park has been loved to death. If you haven't been over there recently, with the addition of some new talent and staff onboard, the park looks excellent. We did a lot of renovation. We've gotten staff, the previous staff that was here, we've got them additional training. They're doing great. They really appreciate having that expertise and also being taught how to do things the proper way. So the park looks really great. But again, with Copper Sky, we are now adding an additional eight multipurpose fields, four of which are lit, four are not. And then we have the addition of the three softball fields and the one big league field, which that's a really neat addition for a community to have. Most communities don't have ninety-foot bases and fields such as that. It actually looks like a big league ballpark when you look out there. I want to see a home run on that field very badly. But that was definitely a nice addition. Most of the time, you have to go to a high school. And we're also hoping to partner with MU SD to host tournaments. We actually came through last year in a pinch with Pecanah Park for one of their girls softball tournaments. They really enjoyed playing there and they actually said, "We'd actually like to come back and play again at your facility" because it rained and washed out their fields. So what we're looking for tonight is approval of the fees. Again, they are meant to recover some costs that the city has to operate, involved in the classes or supplies and instructors. And being in a new building, there's air and electric and maintenance and cleaning. With the fields, there's mowing and water and upkeep and putting more stabilizer down. And again, too, when turning on those lights, there's electricity as well that ED three is going to charge. We did have some good rates at Pecanah. We were able to calculate what the lights are actually costing us at Pecanah. With Copper Sky, we had to go with some estimates after talking to ED three. We plan on visiting those light fees in about three months. The park is not up and running, so we do not know what the actual cost will be. But if it comes out to be lower than we thought, there can always be adjustments. And that's why we have fee ranges for a lot of these classes, the programs and the field fees so that we can adjust as necessary. Because we do want to make sure that we're meeting the community needs. And if we find that things are a little too high, we can adjust down.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Jennifer. At this time, I obviously open up any questions, concern, discussion to the council. But I'd really like to see if the members of the BFO, the Budget Finance and Operations Committee, would take some time to help inform other council members as to some of the discussions that were had, why this is still as a recommendation and some of their thoughts on this. So I'd open it up. Those, those members on the BFO or myself, Councilmember Potter and Councilmember Campbell. So, please. Councilmember Campbell.
Thanks, Mayor. So I vividly recall that meeting. That was about four and a half hours or so. And for the members of the community that spoke tonight on this particular topic as far as field rentals and light rentals, I can tell you that in that meeting, we were hearing your thoughts before you actually came to the meeting. Because that's something that we talked about a lot, was how it would affect your organizations and your nonprofits, baseball and football. And the costs for lights, as Jennifer said earlier, is probably the most expensive thing to run at those fields. And that, that's obviously concerning and we have to be able to recover costs and that's something that we talked about. I guess the field rental is the, is, we spend the most time on the field rental, field and light rentals because of the heavy usage. And a couple of things that were mentioned was, in the beginning, I've got some notes from the meeting here. In the beginning, the, the offset between Pecanah Park and Copper Sky, the, the offset was going to be huge and nobody would want to use Copper Sky. So we actually made some adjustments in the BFO to adjust down the fees that were originally proposed to, to get people to want to use Copper Sky and not just shy away and go, go to Pecanah Park. But I can, I can tell you from, from the conversations that we had and the information that was presented to BFO, I'm comfortable with these fees, given that the light fee could be adjusted at Copper Sky after it being three months open or so. But I'm, I'm only comfortable because of the costs associated with running, running the, the lights and, and maintaining the fields and given the information that we were given in BFO. I can tell you that it was heavily, heavily vetted and, and I'm, I'm comfortable with these fees.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Potter.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Kimmel in the sense that we, we vetted it and we discussed it quite a bit on the impact of the change in fees at Pecanah Park and the new potential fees at, at Copper Sky. Jennifer, I have a question for you though in that, in that end. Because the light fees are proposed to be the same twenty dollars at each park. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Potter, it is.
But the cost of operating the lights at each park is not the same. Is that correct as well?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Potter, you are correct. After that meeting, the BFO meeting, since that discussion came up talking about unifying the fees, we did some further research. We called Chandler, Queen Creek, Tempe, Gilbert and Casa Grande because these cities have multiple facilities that have lit fields and they do the same thing. They have one light fee for all of their fields. They said it was way too difficult because a lot of times it depends on light fixtures, how old the poles are, depending on where they're situated. So what they did was to unify that. They have the same fee for all of their lights, for all of their parks. So again, bringing back what the BFO had said about trying to come up with more of a unified fee, that's what we did. We, we looked to unify that fee for both Pecanah and also Copper Sky. And we looked to see what some other cities did as far as best practices and benchmarking, and that is what they did. And that's how we came up with the standard fee.
And what is the fee for each estimate? I know it's an estimate for Copper Sky, but what, what is the estimate at this point for each?
Sure. For the softball fields at Pecanah, the lights run anywhere from eighteen seventy-eight to eighteen eighty per hour. The multipurpose are from eight sixty-six to eleven fifty-five per hour. The estimated light cost, and again, as we like to say, estimated because the park is not up and running yet, for the softball fields is thirty nineteen, thirty-two nineteen per hour for a softball field. The baseball field being the largest is forty-nine twenty per hour. And the multipurpose fields are forty-one thirty-five an hour.
Okay. And in regards to the, the, how the funding is set up for Copper Sky, it is actually a part from the general fund. Is that correct? There is a, there's a special Copper Sky Fund for the multi-gen center and the park.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Potter, there is a separate fund. It still is funded though. The Copper Sky is still funded through general fund for subsidy. So if the Copper Sky Park didn't quite meet its revenue projections, but Pecanah did exceed revenue projections, bottom line is we would meet our revenue projections.
Okay.
Because again, it's, they're all, it's all supported by the general fund.
Okay. My, my feeling, and I think I expressed this at the BFO, is that I believe that there'll be more, more demand at Copper Sky because it is, is a newer field. There is more excitement generated. And I, I have, I have a hard time pricing the field, the lighting, the same for each across the board. I understand the simplicity of it and want to make it as simple as possible. I, I, I get that. But what I'm having a hard time is that we're charging the lighting at Pecanah in hopes to overcome the expense at Copper Sky. When in practice, we have a separate fund and granted, it may be subsidized to the general fund. But I don't think on accounting method, it just doesn't, that, I, I'm, I have a hard time. I have a hard time with that. And I think as a practical point regarding fees for the, the Little League and, and the, and the, well, the nonprofits, I think if they, they can have that choice of where they want to play and, 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 you know, have their sports teams. And if there is a greater demand at Copper Sky, you know, I, they even said this evening, they're willing to play at Pecanah. So I, I think, and, and the price recovery, if you can help me with that, is seventy-five percent is kind of the general, seventy percent?
That's on the multi-gen.
Excuse me?
That's on the multi-gen.
On the multi-gen.
That's not on the park fees.
Okay, okay. Forgive me for that. All right. But, but still, my point's the same, especially with the lights, that I, I feel more comfortable applying a separate lighting fee per hour, you know, in respect of the Pecanah Park to Copper Sky based, based on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Potter, we actually, when we first went into BFO, we did have different prices. Coming out of BFO, we were given direction to try to unify those prices and that's what we did. Because we also know that Pecanah has limited fields and limited lights. Therefore, obviously, if those fees were less, we will not be able to meet the demand. So people will have to go to Copper Sky and then we'll have to decide on a policy on who gets what fields, how often, because it will be a difference in price. So coming out of BFO, the direction was try to go ahead and unify the price and that is what we did.
Another question for you. There was a request to table and possibly change the fees going forward. Would that have to be posted for sixty days as well?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, anytime at this point, we're looking at the fees that have been posted. After talking to Tina, the city attorney, if the fees go down, they would not need to be reposted. It would only be if the fees were hired. So if the fees were to be lower than the current fees that have been proposed or advertised, you would not need to repost those. Only if they are more money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Potter. I'd just like to weigh in a little bit on this too, just to, to bring everybody up to speed. You know, there's, there's, this is a very complex issue. And, you know, just like, just like Councilmember Kimmel said, I mean, we spent some four hours in a meeting going through every number, every scenario, every possibility, every compromise, anything we could think of to not have to increase fees. But when you have to, you also have to face facts. And that is, is we've been elected steward, fiscal stewards of the entire city. And as such, we have to look at the big picture. We have to look at the fact that it is not necessarily right or fair for all of the taxpayers to subsidize individual groups. However, I also have sympathy and feel for those individual groups as I too have a son that plays sports. And I too have a daughter that's up and coming to play sports. And I don't want to have to pay any more than I absolutely have to. So what we tried to do is we tried to look at every rational possibility and, and, and yet still see how this ties into the overall budget. Because at the end of the day, it's true, the city is seen as the deep pockets. The city is seen as the one that has the money. I get it. But the reality is, is you, the taxpayer told us and helped pay for the building of this facility. It does not pay for its maintenance. It does not pay for its ongoing expense. Just like your home does not pay for the roof as it starts to leak, does not pay for the electric bills as they go up every month. Okay? And so to this end, we have to see in big picture, how is this going to affect? These, these field fees have not been raised since two thousand and six. That's wonderful. I wish we could keep them at that level forever. But we have a two million dollar a year park coming online that we have to fund out of the general fund every year. Now, to Councilmember Potter's point, we were lucky enough and partnered enough with Ak Chen who helped subsidize that. That is what's allowing this park to move forward in its completion and in its entirety. And we owe a big debt of gratitude to them for that. However, that being said, you have to look at the entire budget for the city. You're looking at approximately thirty million dollars. Of that, half of it goes to police and fire because they're our public safety. If you want to pave a road, a road is a million dollars a mile. So as you start to do the math on this, really, really quickly, what you see is, is that we have a real problem that as we come down, this council has to see the big picture on what we're having to deal with fiscally and financially in this coming budget time. Now, I don't mean to throw anybody under the bus here. Certainly, that's not my intent with police and fire. But the reality is, is it's, and it's an expensive profession. And if we want those quality municipal services, we have to pay for them. So to that end, like I said, what is before us here is a fully vetted, extemporaneous time in which we've gone through and looked at all these fees. Now, let's do the math on this. Currently, Little League is paying thirteen dollars for lighting and two dollars a field if you're a youth softball field. Okay? That's current, that's fifteen dollars. If the range is approved, the range extends from fifteen to, excuse me, yeah, from fifteen to, uh, let me see here if I'm doing the math here, to twenty. Did I get that right, Jennifer?
For the field rental?
Yes.
For a softball field, it would be, the proposed would be five dollars for an hour and then the lights would be twenty proposed.
Okay.
So it would be twenty-five.
So again, we have a separation between field and light. So, so from a field usage of, of two dollars to a field usage of five dollars, that's a three dollar increase. If you're paying for lights, which you may not be, because we have more fields now, so we don't have to utilize as many night games and nighttimes, the, the theory is if that decreases, that's a good, a good thing. And with that, then you have a range and if, let's say it's, let's say it's fifteen dollars. Let's say it's the lower end of the range. Well, now you're looking at twenty. So your total went from fifteen to twenty. That's five dollars. That's less than one dollar per year since two thousand and six to twenty-fourteen that that's increased. That's pretty generous when you consider that the city is subsidizing over fifty percent of the cost of the usage of these fields. That's coming directly out of the general fund. If we continue to subsidize more and do not put these fees in place, then we have to decide what is going to be cut, council. We are going to have to decide and sit here again and decide, okay, what, what, what positions are being cut? Whether the municipal services are going to be cut, et cetera. And so this is, this is the dilemma before us. It certainly was the dilemma before us in the BFO. And, and I'm not suggesting that this is the only way. However, I'm saying that many, many, many hours went into the vetting of this. Every potential area that we could figure out on how to cut costs, how to compromise, how to find a way to, to make this happen, went into this. And so when I look at this same field fee and I see that the cost of the lights are thirty-two nineteen, that, that right there is a twelve dollar nineteen subsidy from, from the city. If, if in assuming that it was five, fifteen dollars for light usage and, and five dollars for, for the field usage for youth softball. So again, you're talking about a six or seven, maybe even a ten dollar increase overall. But in the end, you're still talking about a subsidy that is over fifty percent from the city. Can the city in truth justify to the taxpayer that we're going to subsidize seventy-five percent? I don't know that that, I don't know that it can be done. I just don't know if this, if, if the council wants to act in that fiscal, fiscal area. And so that's, that's the reason. So to, to your point, Councilmember Campbell, when you talk about, you know, something being lower from a Pecanah, Pecanah Park standpoint, but you're talking something being higher, at the end of the day, you're hoping for that cost recovery, but you're still not even hitting fifty percent. And so I think that we have to consider, again, as a council, what are we doing? If, if these, it, it, an increase is an increase. I get it. And I don't want to pay any more than I have to. But to that end, we are going to have an even harder decision to make, council, when we get to budget here in less than a month, when the budget doesn't weigh out because we can't pay for this all by ourselves. It just, the general fund isn't there. End of story. So those are my comments. Counsel. Yes, Counsel McGusson.
All right. We sat here, we heard that the Little League and the football can't really exist without, with these fees. They said that they're nonprofits, they can't exist with the fees that we're, we're proposing. They also indicated that the city cannot duplicate. And they, realistically, the city couldn't duplicate what you all are doing. And I commend you for doing that. This is going to be a twenty-three thousand dollar impact to a Little League that has grown by forty percent. And, and I understand the impacts and I, I didn't sit on the BFO meetings and thank you all for doing so. But at the same time, you talk about cost recovery. But at the same time, you talk about cost recovery. There are so many club baseball teams out there. My brother runs a club baseball team where we're practicing because there aren't any fields here. We're practicing in Chandler. I'm, as a parent, I'm having to drive my...come home from Phoenix, pick them up, take them into Chandler so they could practice. So there, as a parent, I'm using...I'm spending all this gas, spending on the money to play...pay the club baseball teams. There's five different club baseball teams. So I think as far as the cost recovery, it's going to be made. It's going to be made by the residents that are willing to pay that extra money to use the new park. Now, we heard it. They've said it time and time again. They're not asking us for them to use the new park, right? Is that what I'm hearing? They're want to continue to use Pacana Park. So I don't understand why we couldn't revisit this. And I understand that you've visited this plenty of times. But at the same time, cut these nonprofits a break because they will not exist. And I'm telling you right now, they will go under in the next couple of years. Is this council and the city willing to see that happen? I don't know. I, for one, am not willing to see that happen. So my suggestions is to see the partnership, the partnership that they're proposing. Look at all these other organizations. I founded the American Legion Baseball. And because we haven't been able to have a field, we've been having to use the high school fields, but our Legion Baseball is willing to pay those extra fees to bring people in from Casa Grande, from Eloy, to play within our district. We're willing to pay those fees. So I think the cost recovery is going to be there from different organizations, other than the Little League, other than the Football League. And that's it. That's what I suggest.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Vice Mayor Farrell?
Quick question for the Maricopa Youth Football Team. I'm kind of confused. Is it flag football, tackle football, or both? Just tackle. I could have swore I heard a few up here, a few of you up here say flag.
It's part of the city.
So it's 100% tackle? Okay. Jennifer, you mentioned that you posted, you gave a sixty-day notice for these organizations, not warning them, but notifying them about what was happening and then letting them know about tonight's council meeting? I guess my question is, why didn't we allow these organizations to come and sit in on the BFO meetings and discuss this with the three of you on the committee and go in the details so you guys could explain to them so they could have understood a little more better about the expense situation that the city's in? And I hope that this council's giving you a better idea tonight because we've got to be as fiscally conservative as we can as a council. And I hope that the mayor gave you all a very good explanation of why these are proposed the way they're proposing. And I got to tell you, I have to support what the council's talking about, what this BFO committee's talking about up here, with the exception of, and this is why I wish you could have been a part of the BFO meeting. I think Councilwoman Gussi has some...Councilwoman Gussi has got some great ideas. I was thinking on the same line. For example, why couldn't we, as a possibility, open up the fields at Pacana Park to any nonprofit organization that does not charge a fee to play in that league, to play on those fields free at daytime hours only? You know, this is the possibility that could have been talked about in the BFO committee, and you could have had all this panned out. And tonight, I almost...I'd like to see this maybe tabled for another couple of weeks and brought back to the first of March and get, again, get the BFO together with these two organizations. It sounds like it's just the Little League and the Maricopa Youth Football that it's the main concern. I'd like to see the BFO committee talk to these two committees in a non-public, well, not a non-public forum, but in a forum to where the public's all welcome to come, don't get me wrong, where you can discuss this and talk about some possibilities before we set this thing and etch it in stone.
Okay. Well, I guess, and I don't disagree. I mean, one of the things you have to understand about me is I love to get together with as many people as possible in a room and talk about ideas. I call it brainstorming. I think I don't have all the ideas. Yeah, brainstorming. There you go. If you get brainstorming, you can get a lot of stuff out there. You can talk about a lot of things. Let me throw some counters to that, just because I believe you got to have all sides to the story. First counter is that the BFO is a public meeting. The BFO is the ability for any member of the public to attend. And, you know, it's posted, it's publicized, it's pushed out there. So it's not a secret meeting. It's an absolute public meeting, just like this one is. So that's the first counter. The second counter is that, you know, we have Pacana Park, and yet it still costs money to keep it going. I mean, we've loved it to death. We have to bring it back up to par, and we have to maintain it at that par. And so it costs money. It costs staff time. It costs material time. We've had...we're ten years old now as a city. Those mowers we're using have run their lifespan. It's time to buy new mowers. And, you know, the list goes on and on. And then we have an example by Councilwoman Gussi who talks about, you know, the gas getting to and from places. This increase is $7. You know, the gas to get into Chandler and back is higher than $7 at $3.30 a gallon. So I guess, at the end of the day, like I said, this is a perspective. Now, it is unfortunate that, in my opinion, ultimately, big-picture thinking, this wasn't done years ago. If it had been raised a dollar a year over the course, it wouldn't be a shock to the system. I always make the example, if you went into Burger King today and your hamburger costs a buck, and you go in there tomorrow and it costs five bucks, you're probably never going back to Burger King again. But if you go in there this year and it costs a dollar, and next year it's $1.10, and the year after that it's $1.20, you don't like it, but you keep going back. And I think that's our issue here, is that we're having to shock the system because we haven't done it. We haven't done it since 2006. And we're not even on the same par as the other cities. Now, Maricopa's special. Like I said, I don't want to have to raise a fee. But at the same time, to your question, Councilwoman Gussi, I don't want to bankrupt the Maricopa Little League or anyone else. But I also don't want to bankrupt the city. I think that's what we're elected here to do, is to not bankrupt the city. And those are things that we have to consider as fiscal stewards of this position. So again, this is a proposal. This is a variance. It is not to say that because we approve this proposal that the high end of the scale is immediately gone to. In fact, I mean, this is a point of clarification, Jennifer. But if fees need to be raised in the future rather than having to come back to council every time, as you said, but certainly, the city manager would let the council know that we're in this position. Is that correct? That the cost of electricity, for example, has gone up this year, and therefore, you know, we've approved this range from five to 15. It needs to go from five to six. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. If the city council approves the fees as recommended and it allows this position to increase fees when appropriate, yes, my intention would be to come back to the city council, not just to say that I'm increasing fees, but to indicate why a fee increase is needed. So that would be how I would administer it.
Okay. Thank you. So again, council, this is, you know, like I said, if I could make the numbers change, I would do it today. I would have done it already. But I can't make the numbers change. They don't lie. The math doesn't lie. And the math is going to be there again in a month. And we have to plan the entire budget for this entire city. I'm a financial advisor by trade. This is what I do. So I certainly want to hear the emotion. And there's an emotional tie. There's an emotional wanting to do, make everybody happy. But at the same time, we're between a rock and a hard place with opening a park that costs $2 million a year that we have never had before in our city budget out of expendable, quote-unquote, $15 million, which is not expendable because it pays for roads and the services and staff and everything else. But it's $2 million. How do we fund this, folks? Yes, Councilmember Brown? Then Councilwoman Chapatos?
Mr. Mayor, I do not serve on the BFO committee, but I have no reason to doubt that you gentlemen have vetted well the cost involved in this park. Now, the introduction of the subject of fee increases, cost increase of anything, whether it's a product or a service, always gets difficult. I don't believe any of you citizens out there would think that any of us gladly would want to increase your burden for anything. That's not what we're about. What we certainly should not be about, I'm certainly not about tap dancing, ronny issue, or pandering. If indeed, there's a need for rate increase and it's been well-vetted, and the mayor has articulated, I think appropriately and thoroughly, what the alternatives are, we have to stick with that. Now, I love Tommy. He's a good friend, and he dearly loves working with youngsters Maricopa. And I know Tommy would not want this city to go belly up or to look like less than a first-class city because we cut the fees for anything. Now, if we can make an accommodation, we're certainly going to do that. I'm not going to sit here and pander to you in terms of, oh, well, so forth, so forth. We're going to stick with whatever the budget allows us to do. Period.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilwoman Chapatos?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question for Jennifer. I don't know if you know this. If we were to table something like this tonight, that means we don't have fees. That means you can't schedule anything. Is that correct? And is that going to impact seasons?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as far as the program fees, we would need those adopted as soon as possible as Copper Sky is getting ready to open on the 15th. So we would need those adopted as soon as possible. Again, it could be the next meeting. Those are the program fees. The special event fees, we've got that coming up with some of the other events. Also, it has already been determined, we have those fees out there. The library fees, we currently have those. But with field rental fees, we would just have to continue with the fees we currently have, which means that there would be subsidy by the city for the new park until fees have been established.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, we need to figure out how we wish to direct staff, whether we accept a straight motion, whether we amend a motion, whether we add additional direction to some of the other ideas out there. It's in your hands, council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the fees as presented.
Okay. There's a motion on the table? Is there a second?
Support.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the item? I would like to ask Jennifer, I know that when we adopt this range that we had a proposal of $20. That was above the minimum range. So my compromise in the acceptance part here is just because we propose a range does not by any means mean that we have to dictate the high end or even the middle of the range. We could start at the lower end of the range. Is that not correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, absolutely. This was the advertised proposed range. So if you are picking a price within that, that is fine, as well as you are able to lower it as well without having to post it again for the sixty days.
So if we approve this, and council, this is my thought and compromise, if we can approve this from the standpoint of as it's listed, but with the direction that it's to be on the, maybe the lower end to start with so that we are, like you were talking about, we're revisiting the lights here in three months. We can come back and we can revisit some of these things, you know, periodically so we can make sure that we're within the range. If we're too high, then we need to go lower. If we're too low, then we need to make sure that we have that flexibility to go higher so that we don't bankrupt us. But at the same time, I think that we can give that direction so as to give the breaks that you talked about, Councilwoman Gussi. And it's not just to, you know, 501(c)(3), but rather, it's to the taxpayer in general. It's to anyone who wants to use this park. And that way, we can start there. It'll give us a place to budget from, and we can adjust as we continue to go. Does that sound reasonable, council?
Is it an amendment?
It would be an amendment, so I would have to...
I'll accept the amendment.
Wait a second. Councilmember Kimball?
So with the amendment, that would be starting at the low end, right? Starting at the low end of the fee structure? Okay, that would be my amendments. Accept them as proposed, starting at the low end of the range.
I'll accept that.
So it's as proposed, as amended. So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a range for the fees on the lights? I don't think there was.
Yes. Is there? Ten to forty-five dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Ten to forty-five dollars.
There are.
Okay. Ten to forty-five.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So again, we're helping to subsidize that by going a little bit lower, but with the knowledge that, guys, at $30, $32 an hour upwards to $50, that's a lot of subsidy from the general fund. That's a lot. So, I mean, it's tough, but it's a starting point. It's a starting point. Yes, Councilwoman Gussi?
I just wanted to add, if we could accommodate these individuals as best to use the non-light time, I mean, I know we can't...
That's there to be light.
Yes. But if we could accommodate them, I mean, that at least would help them, get them through the grace period of them before they're impacted. And another question, when would these fees take effect?
Good question.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gussi, just so you know, I have had extensive talks, and I see them here in the audience, with Heather and Dawn from Little League. They have been absolutely wonderful to work with. And one of the things that we did talk about was the fact with all the new fields coming onboard, they can play a lot more day games. They were actually a bit happy about some of that. They wouldn't have to have such long days. So that is one of the things that we talked about, is getting them a lot more daytime on there as well. And so the fees, once the fees would be adopted, Um, and so the fees, once the fees would be adopted, then they would, we would have them take place after, I'm looking towards Vanessa and...
They would become effective in 30 days.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Mayor, just, I just want you to know I'm not going to be supporting this only because I don't see the harm in tabling this for two more weeks, and having further discussion with just these two organizations out there with the BFO committee, to get just a little bit more detailed dialogue, to see if there can be any type of negotiations on the daytime fields at Pecanah Park, is all I'm asking, so I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Councilman Potter.
To clarify, any proposed fees, for, for example, the lighting, it'd be the same for each park, is that correct? Whatever is put in place would be the same price?
Mayor, Councilmember Potter, that is what's on the table right now, to have the same price for both parks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Councilmember Potter?
No.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
No.
Councilmember Chapadas?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes item 10.2. Thank you all very much for attending tonight. But we're not done yet. All right, moving on to item 10.3. Mayor and City Council discussed possibly take action on approving a request by the Information Technology Department on the purchase of critical IT infrastructure. All kinds of components, I'll leave that up to you, Eugene.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. We have before you a proposal to acquire some critical infrastructure components for the IT department. Uh, we've been here for approximately two months, we've noticed that you, uh, are desperately saturated on your IT storage environment. What we're proposing here is to mitigate that circumstance through the acquisition of a similar component, which will give us, uh, capacity probably into the next seven years. Uh, it is something that, on the surface, seems like a lot, but it is indeed, uh, a cost that is commensurate with this type of technology, uh, and something that will take you into the future. Uh, one of the other added values of this, uh, is that the, uh, storage that we're currently using that is saturated, or approaching saturation, will actually be able to, uh, be deployed out of the Copper Sky facility, and be utilized as a hot spot, hot site failover, uh, facility, which is one of the items that was specified in your audit from March, I believe it was. So that item being sort of the bulk of the, um, the infrastructure, uh, is something that is really critical. Uh, the items that we have also cited, tape backup system, uh, which is not working, uh, we do not have reliable backups, uh, we have some security issues in terms of being able to encrypt, especially PD's mobile units, uh, the tough books, and also some of the desktop units, in order for them to be compliant with some of the federal standards. The items that we indicated in here were carefully evaluated. Uh, there are things that we still need to put in place, but we realize that some of those could actually be postponed until the next fiscal year. But the $112,000 for this, we, uh, put a lot of thought and consideration into, and we know it's a big expense, but we ask your consideration in this, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, questions? I know this goes back to the audit that we did, and I know that's something we've been working on, and in my time that I spend here, I know we've talked to, and also to other members of IT, and, you know, this is part of the evolution of a city, it's painful, and IT is probably one of the most expensive pieces of this pie and equation, but, um, you know, is there any other way around this that you see?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, great question. Uh, the analogy is sort of like the 747 that's flying, and we're constantly throwing the seats out. Uh, we're doing everything to keep it afloat, or, you know, in the air right now. Uh, we've even gone so far as to purchase portable, uh, network detached storage devices, uh, going up to Fry's Electronics up in Phoenix to do some offsets, and there's only so much we can do. Uh, and at this point, what we're looking at is this upgrade, which, again, as I said, is going to actually take you into another five to seven years of service. Given the fact that it's about $70,000, uh, you look at seven years, that's $10,000 per year investment, so not, not completely outside of the realm of possibility in general expenses for IT. Now, one of the analogies to keep in mind is, if you have a laptop at home, or a PC at home, uh, you've had it for about five years, you know that your disk storage space is going to start to become pretty critical. Uh, and if it does, you're going to start to see massive slowdowns in that processing, uh, the data access, and in essence, that's what you're seeing right now on our environment. So, again, we don't take this lightly. Uh, we've done everything we could to try to offset this, um, and we're just at a point now where, if we don't take any action, our estimate's about next 30, 60 days, 90 at the most, uh, we are going to have severe saturation and will have stalemate.
Ouch. Yes, Councilwoman Chapadas.
Mayor, I move to approve item 10.3.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion 10.4, we're going to discuss possibly take action to approve a budgetary transfer request by the Information Technology Department in the amount of $97,000 from the general fund, general government contingency. For discussion and action, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, we began this budget year with, with two, uh, contract IT staff. Um, we, we brought Gene onboard, uh, and, and at one point for months, we, we had no internal IT staff, we, we now have Peter back on, and we've hired him. But what we need to do is, we need to, uh, we've, we've used the normally budget employment, uh, or payroll money to, to help offset these contract people. Uh, we need to transfer 94, no, $97,000 into the IT budget fund contingency to cover the cost, uh, of continuing to use the three contract IT personnel we have. We, with, uh, city manager Rose in place now, we're moving forward with a, a final, uh, structure of IT as, based on the audit, and, and we hope to, to bring these contract staffs, uh, to hire for permanent staff within 10 to 14 weeks. Uh, we'll have this wrapped up before the end of the budget cycle, but, but we need this money to carry us over on, on paying our contractors who are, are, uh, work, you know, 40 hours plus a week, uh, until we can get those new positions onboard, the three new positions. And I, I leave it at that for questions.
Questions, council? Seeing none? Oh, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And finally, item 10.5, this is the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona, supporting a restoration of highway user revenue funds, which is known as HERF, distributions to local governments for transportation projects. This is a big deal.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, this is the first year in almost 10 years that we felt close to restoring HERF funding. Uh, there's 119 million, uh, that we hope that we could collect if the governor and the state will approve that. Um, all of the cities have gotten onboard, all the entities have gotten onboard to, to help push this. This is Maricopa's effort, uh, to help, uh, move the needle, uh, towards a final, uh, bringing back HERF funding. For Maricopa, it would be 314,000, but for the state, 119 million that would just help offload a bunch of other costs, it would be good for transportation. We're always stressing over transportation funding and gas tax and more, uh, you know, user, uh, low-cost vehicles. This would be very important. Passage of the resolution, uh, would, would send the message, and then Mr. Mayor would ask you to, to write a letter to the governor, uh, explaining, uh, the, the city's position, and urging HERF to, to take action. Uh, the good news, since I did staff report, is, um, Speaker Tobin on Valentine's Day last Friday, uh, put out a bill, HB 2692, which is the restoration of, of HERF. And so now we have a bill, we didn't have a bill up to this point. The governor didn't put it in the budget, but now we got the bargaining chips, and so, a- as this comes, the crunch time at 100 days, we'll see if this gets passed, but, uh, we, we all have our, our hopes up. So I, I urge council to approve this, uh, resolution and get on the bandwagon with everybody else.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
All right, uh, any further discussion?
All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
Just one observation, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry that the crowd we had here left, because it's a typical example of the monies that are swept from cities, and how we lose money.
Uh huh.
And we're talking about more money being spent that might jeopardize our total budget.
Yep.
Now, if we have to lay off people because of certain expenses, the same people would be crying. We all would be crying. But I'm sorry that this came last, Paul, because this should have come early on to sort of highlight what we're talking about.
I...
You had, you had nothing to do with it.
I agree.
We're just that, you know, it's important.
Now, you, you honestly, Councilman Brown, you bring up a really good point, and that is, I just leaned over to Vice Mayor Farrell and said, with 314,000, $100,000, you know what I could do with that here in the city? I mean, that, that would be, that would be great to influx and offload some of our general fund expenditures for transportation to the HERF funding, and, and be able to utilize that elsewhere. And that, that would pretty much have negated our entire discussion on 10.2 tonight, perhaps, so...
Exactly.
That, that brings up a good point, so...
But also, to that point, you think, uh... The fact that people are passionate when it comes to them, something affecting them, we need to communicate better, and inform them that, hey, this affects you just as much as the Little League affected you, or the, the football affects you.
Exactly.
But, I mean, that's where we're failing to, to get that information.
And to that point, I mean, we, we absolutely, I mean, this will be broadcast over TV, and if anyone's watching this long, uh, you know, after our, our lengthy discussion tonight, uh, the fact of the matter is, is this is a perfect example of what it means to write into your legislatures, to write to the governor, and, uh, you, just like you can fill this room here, you can, you can fill their inboxes, you can, you can send notifications to them, and, uh, it makes a difference.
Mr. Mayor, in, knowing that the people behind me are going to throw something at me if I speak anymore, I, I would like to add that, um...
One, two, three.
That if this, if HERF is restored, ADOT will have another 55 to 60 million dollars, and we have a couple ideas of how ADOT could spend that money.
Indeed.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for participating tonight. Uh, can I have a motion to move to each session, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.